...owner of the Marin Alliance Medical Marijuana Dispensary.
Excuse me, Lynette, could you shut that door because it's kind of hard to hear?
Yeah.
Sorry. Yeah, and maybe speak a little closer to the mic. It's a little hard, I know.
Okay.
That's better, thank you.
Larry Bregman's been assisting me with this necessary move of the club because of the change in the zoning at School Street, and I'm going to read a letter from Larry since he cannot be here tonight. Dear Council, I'm in my home state of Wisconsin until Wednesday afternoon when I'll head back to California. I don't expect to be back in time for your meeting, and therefore I'm writing to briefly update you about the challenges facing the Marin Alliance. The owner of School Street Plaza has sent notices to terminate to all tenants, including the Alliance. We've been talking to them about extending the Alliance's lease but have not been able to do so. As of today, the dispensary is supposed to vacate in 60 days. We met with Janet Coulson, Heather Abrams, and Jeff Beiswenger a couple of months ago to see if we could engage with the town to facilitate a relocation of the dispensary. The Alliance cannot relocate its license under the current code, which requires it to go through another public vetting process. This is a very complex and laborious process from which the Alliance has always been exempt as a legacy business. On the other hand, if the council simply amended the relevant code section to permit the Alliance to relocate to another site as a continuing operation, it would facilitate an orderly transition to a new location with a minimum of disruption of its service to the community, including many medical patients, about 1,500 actually. Hence Lynette's team, my team, drafted some proposed ordinance changes to allow the Alliance to relocate with a minimum of delay and disruption. There are other changes included in the draft that was attached, and you have all in your all emails. But the most important change is to include a relocation exemption for the Alliance as an ongoing legacy business. The other changes included in the draft are not as urgent and could be reviewed in the normal course of business. At any rate, our draft with suggested changes has been attached to the emails that are in your inboxes. The Alliance situation is currently on your agenda for your upcoming meeting tonight. While I do not believe that I will be back in time to appear, please feel free to email me if you have any questions, suggestions, et cetera. In the meantime, thank you all for your service and dedication to Fairfax. That's from Larry Bregman, our friend and attorney who's been helping on this whole thing. So I'm just here to ask for the cooperation in the name of compassion to help us move the Marin Alliance, since you seem to want to build at the plaza and the landlord wants to sell. And that is why we're here tonight, to ask for cooperation and permission to move. Now, I'm going to introduce my doctor, who cares for a lot of patients here in Marin County. He's Dr. Nyland.
Please come up.
Good evening, Council. I'm sure a lot of you remember me from last time I was here. I, you know, my role is, as a palliative care physician, to treat people with chronic debilitating conditions. I mean, like Parkinson's and cancer, and you know people like this. You know your friends have these conditions, and they have symptoms, and those symptoms need to be managed. Last time I was here, I asked if you guys had any questions. I know we didn't really have a back and forth, but I want, I would love to engage with you. If you do have any questions, stop me, all right? And talk to me, because I would love to help you understand the importance of what we're doing here, all right? We can use this for pain, for short-term memory loss, for all kinds of different conditions that we need to treat. And when we, when we tell a patient, you know, you can go to a dispensary and talk to somebody about what you need to get, what the dose is, all of these things, it takes it out of, it gives... What I'm trying to say is, the staff there is exceptionally helpful in de-stigmatizing and allowing my patients to actually get the treatment they need. And it's the only one in the entire area. I mean, when you think about it, they've been around for over 20 years, right? But Marin doesn't have any other brick-and-mortar place that they can go, that they can get help. It's kind of important that we maintain that. And I'm happy to teach you the pharmacodynamics of THC, if you'd like, but I don't think that's really what we're here to do tonight. But what can I help you understand from a medical standpoint about the importance of this?
Okay, thank you. We're not doing a back and forth. At this time, we're hearing from the presenters, and then we may ask questions.
All right.
Thank you very much, Dr. Nyland. Is there anyone else, Lynette Shaw?
I'd like to introduce my attorney, my other attorney, Lauren Mendelson.
Good evening, honorable council members, staff, and community members who are here tonight. My name is Lauren Mendelson, and I am the junior partner at the Law Office of Omar Figueroa, and I represent Ms. Shaw with regards to cannabis-related matters and regulatory compliance. And I am also on the Board of Directors of California Normal, which has been around for many, many years, fighting for the rights of cannabis users. Also previously on the board of the International Cannabis Bar Association. The Marin Alliance is the oldest dispensary in the world, we believe, that has been providing an essential medical service to members of Fairfax and the surrounding area. They have fought the, fought court cases and won, you know, against the federal government for the right to stay open in this community and continue to serve these patients and these, these consumers. And right now, we're here tonight for a couple of things, an urgent request about being able to relocate due to circumstances beyond Ms. Shaw's control. As you heard, the landlord is evicting all of the tenants due to something about the property, and so she's been a good tenant, she's had no issues there for many years, but sadly, she's now being forced to move. It's not what she wants to do. And the way the code is written, as we've discussed, and I sent you all an email, a couple of them, you know, and Mr. Bregman also explained how the way the code is written right now does not work for a number of different reasons. And so rather than having to cease operating and potentially not be able to ever open again, and not, you know, the stoppage in services, we're looking for some minor amendments to the code that would allow for this relocation to happen. And then also, kind of separately, some, some cleanups to this code that would allow her to operate this dispensary like other dispensaries across the state. The head of the department, folks at the Department of Cannabis Control have commented how the Fairfax cannabis regulations are unfair and illogical, and they're placing restrictions on Ms. Shaw that no, again, no other business has to have two separate premises, multiple licenses. It really creates, it makes it hard for her to comply. It makes it very expensive. It's creating unnecessary duplicities and inefficiencies. And there's, you know, we're asking for this to be remedied so she can simply operate her business in a normal way and serve members of the community and keep doing so. So I believe that I kind of explained this in my email. I did, you know, write these proposed amendments just to the code. We tried to, you know, change as little as possible to just, you know, fix these, again, these inefficiencies and these things that are making it very, very hard for her to operate. And again, the most urgent thing at this point in time, because of the 60-day notice, is being able to, to relocate. The state license process is going to be very long in itself, and so she needs to begin that as soon as possible. And she can't do that until she's able to move to the new location. And so there's, you know, there's some things that, that have to happen in order for her to be able to continue providing this service. And so I'm, you know, I'm more than happy to answer any questions that you have about the proposed amendments, about different aspects of, you know, California cannabis law and things like that. But I do urge you to, you know, please take this request to heart. These are not major amendments that we're asking for. This is a longstanding business. Ms. Shaw's also a Fairfax resident, and so, you know, we're really just, you know, asking for a pathway forward to be able to continue serving this community. So, thank you.
Hey, Ms. Shaw, was there anybody else that was speaking on your group? And then hopefully this is the last one, and then we can ask questions if we have them. I'm sorry, you need to speak into the mic.
So my name is Thomas Boyd, and I've worked with Lynette for seven years, but I've known about her for 20. So she's a legend in the industry. She's one of the reasons why this is legal in California. And so she's been kind of the last of the generation that made this legal in the state of California. She worked on the earliest initiatives. She gathered some of the original signatures for Dennis Perone's early initiative. She worked with Jack Carrer, among others, and these two are with Lynette, part of why Proposition 215 succeeded in the state of California. And this is the literal foundation of the cannabis industry in the state of California. And so this is something that started also in Fairfax. The permit that she has predates the state industry in California, and this is one of the places where Fairfax has led the country. So the dispensary enjoys widespread popular support. Lynette's been a community member for decades, and the Marin Alliance is a historical institution that draws 4,500 customers a month to Fairfax. Marin Alliance contributes around 60,000 a year to the tax base. In a new location, this would undoubtedly go up. We need your assistance to navigate a local and state process that isn't designed for speed, to maintain continuous operations and ensure the survival of this important legacy business. We ask the town council to please consider immediately supporting our proposed amendments so that we may all make sure that this historic business, a part of the fabric of Fairfax itself, can continue operating and serving the community as it has for decades. Thank you for your consideration, and we hope you'll look favorably upon our proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. And now I think if, if council members have any question for Lynette or any of her folks who spoke, Councilmember Hellman?
Yes, I have a question for Ms. Shaw, and I have a question for Ms. Mendelson. And so you received the notice in July, is that right?
August. First, we've had several notices. I've got at least 20 of them.
Okay. And so when are, when is demolition beginning, or what? Because we have, the town, to my knowledge, hasn't received any applications, so...
No, from what I understand, this is a premature act by the landlord's son, who took over possession of the property because Mr. Izazi is very ill. And he was told that this would be a way to sell the property faster if there's no tenants there, which of course has allowed the homeless to come in and vandalize, and there's a lot of problems there now, except by my place, I have security. So it's, it's, I think, in my, I think it's unnecessary. Fred, the father, said that when it's sold, that's when the evictions would go out. It has not been sold, and the buyer has backed off that the, that the son had, but it's still actively being shopped, so...
The father shared that with you verbally? He didn't, you didn't get it in writing?
Right. And so of course, the son denies, that's what he said. And, and so a lot of the residents there, we had, we had 42 people living there, and they all moved out. We had a dozen businesses, and there's five of us left, actually. And it's, I would like to move, you know? It's, I mean, the infrastructure's from 1930 there. It's been, you know, utilities have been really mediocre, and, and I think we can do better in a better location.
Okay, I guess, so I wrote to Ms. Mendelson earlier today, and I only got one of my questions answered, and I'm sure it was an oversight on your part, but, and I would like Janet to explain to us, so we all have a common understanding up here, and for the, for the public, what the current legal pathway would be, and, and the reasons why you're asking for some changes to the ordinances. And I don't, I don't know that they're simple, but you might think they're, they don't look simple to me when I look at them. And when I, when I read the changes, I was unclear, are you just asking to move with no identified site? Because that sounds like you're asking for carte blanche. We just want to move, let us move. And I'm, I'm just trying, could you help me understand that better, as far as, do you have a location in mind?
Yes, there's actually two locations in mind.
Lynette, you need to speak into the mic because this is being recorded.
We have been looking into a couple of different locations. There's one that we think is the perfect one for us, but we didn't want to put it into the public record yet, so...
But do you understand how it's a challenge to change a civic code and to say, you can move wherever when they may or may not be zoned? And before my time on the council, there was over 20 meetings discussing where the right places are, so that was a lot of community input, and so for us to make changes on the fly makes me personally uncomfortable, but if you want to speak...
So the request is not just for approval to move anywhere.
Okay.
It would be to relocate to a specific site. We're just not ready to say what that is right now, but there are some properties that are being looked at, and it would have to meet the zoning requirements that are already in here. So it's not, it has to be a suitable location that would be otherwise eligible for a dispensary.
But you're asking for a change, like dramatic reduction in the buffer zones from school, blah, 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 all the other, so that's a zoning requirement, isn't it?
So that is a zoning requirement, but it could be amended. And so the, the part of the request is that the distance from schools be reduced from 600 to, and the draft that I sent you said 150, but we're actually thinking 200, even 250 might be all right. And the reason for that is simply because there's so few commercial properties that are, you know, within Fairfax that are even available to rent or buy, that we have to try to look at a little closer. And Ms. Shaw's been right next to the, the baseball field and that park for many years, no issues. Just to get into a dispenser, you have to show ID. There's no, you know, sight or smell or access to the, the plant. And so, you know, it's, it's more of, there's just so few options that, that we have to look at reducing that. And again, because it's, it's, you know, their children can walk past a liquor store and walk in, and, you know, there's a lot easier access to other things. This would be very highly tightly regulated, security at the door, so I don't think that, you know, the, children aren't going to have access, you know?
But can I infer from what you're sharing that it is within 200 feet, or in the 200 feet range of one of those types of sites? Is that, that's obviously why you want to reduce it, is that...
I think that the properties that are, you know, being looked at are certainly, you know, they are with, some of them are under the 600 feet, right? And just looking at where properties are coming available and where the eligible, you know, commercial properties are, it most likely will be, you know, someplace 250 feet-ish, right, is, is kind of what we're, the properties that we're looking at, so...
I'd like to remind the council that since we are the oldest dispensary, that we were grandfathered in at our location for the last 27 years, 50 feet away from the park, and there have been no incidents, and they don't even know we're there, you know?
Thank you.
Anyone else have questions? Councilmember Kachak?
Yeah. So two quick questions. One, to piggyback on the last question about, you know, whether or not you can move the permit to a different location, which seemed like that was the, like, major overarching request here. There are a bunch of other things that were recommended, but that's the, the main trick. The, the question I have is, do you need the buffer change in order to accommodate that main request? Like, if we, if, if the council entertained this idea of saying, you know, someone can, can move their permit with, without opening up the can of worms of a whole new permitting process and accepting all the different applic, like, that, that does seem like an onerous thing, especially in the context of, like, being evicted, no fault. But yeah, I guess, it sounds like there's, you know, limited locations. I wasn't part of that process long ago, but I, I did go to those meetings. I know there was a lot of intense discussion about which specific sites would be possible, so I know there's, it's a touchy subject, but just want to clarify, do you need to have the buffer piece in addition to the relocation?
And I appreciate that question and that clarification. The, I don't, you know, this, this request would, would kind of not be very, kind of, it's not going to work unless you also have that one other amendment. So really, the request is that...
Really those two things, together.
The two, so the buffer and the ability to relocate, that is correct.
Okay, great, thank you. And then one more clarifying thing. Sounds like y'all haven't homed in on one specific location yet. Is the idea that you don't want to choose a location yet because you don't know if it would be permitted locally, so you can't actually ink the deal for a location to start the process for the state approval? So there's just, it's kind of a chicken or the egg sort of thing? Is that where we're at?
Yes.
We have two locations. One is one we prefer, but still, we have to get your cooperation so we can go forward, just to agree that yes, we need to move the Marin Alliance, and that the town has to allow me to do, to move, and then we can go forward with everything. And securing the location will of course be the top of the list, but we, we do need that allowance from you guys, you know?
Yep. So we're, we're prepared, both with the financing and with the location, to move forward immediately if you can approve these two parts of our request. So just to be explicit, we're not waiting on the approval to come first, to go out and find the right location, or to find the financing. We're ready to go. So we are just asking for your help to make the deal work.
And my final question, at least for right now, and I appreciate those candid responses, and that I think helped clarify where we're at. Say we are able to move forward with this as a council, you know, what's the, what's the timing that you all need to have to, to make this even possible? It sounds like you have to be out by the end of the year, Lynette, is that right? Or are you hoping that, I mean, it's just a very tight timeline, and then multiple big holidays in the mix here, so...
Yeah. I mean, so at this point, it's, there's, there was a 60-day notice, a new one the other day, so kind of at least the end of the year, the landlord has offered maybe an extension of a couple of months. We're, you know, we're trying to work to get as much time in the current space as possible to, while this is all working out, but it could be, you know, the end of the year, is, if the landlord wanted to actually enforce that, right? So...
Got it. But, but there's maybe a possibility of having, I'm not, I'm not holding you to that, I'm just trying to get a, yeah.
Perhaps. A few months, I think we can get out of the maybe.
Maybe.
Also, if we have, if we have the plan to go forward, and we can show the landlord that here's the plan, we have all these patients that, that, we have all these patients that could be thrown into a medical crisis without the specific products that we have curated for years, and that's, you know, you just can't replace those products. We had to search high and low and have, you know, we support no corporate anything. We have small farmers that do handcrafted batches that are effective medically, and that's part of our credo, you know? So I think we can maybe, if we have the plan, we're going forward, we've located, we have a firm property, which is, we're in process right now, so we're having to do this step by step as quickly as possible, because it really came out of the blue, and that was not what we were promised. But that has changed. And even though now they don't have a buyer for the property, they're actively shopping it, and this was the way that they thought would be the best way to get it sold, but that's, of course, you know, not what I think.
I'm just going to confirm one more thing. So you don't really know yet if you could get an extension. I don't know when you'll know, that would be helpful to know, but also it sounds like you've got a property in mind. If you got an extension, it would have some impact on your ability to move on that property. Like, if you got an extension, but you didn't have code amendments made, it might, what, destroy that deal, or...
We can't move without your permission, according to your rules and the state's rules.
Yeah. Jump into, there's also another added layer of the state license. So state licenses cannot be transferred, period, to new people or new locations. So a new license is going to have to be applied for from the state, and that can take six months or more for them to approve that. She, we can't even submit that application until we know the address we're moving to, and we don't know what address we're moving to until we know that we can move there when this thing happens tonight. So it truly is a chicken or the egg, and we want to submit that application for the state license tomorrow, but we can't do that yet because of all these other things that have to happen first.
I have a question. So I am the longest-serving member here, and I sat through 23 meetings. The first part was just for medical before Prop 64 passed, and there were literally hundreds of people that came. So while I was one on the council who was more supportive of trying to do what the voters asked for, particularly in Fairfax, my fellow council members looked for some more restrictions, and that's where those buffers came. But I think there's a question I have. It's my understanding that the medical dispensary is a conditional use permit. Conditional use permit, unless there's something I'm missing, is not transferable. And what we did on the recreational, which I personally pushed through and had my council member colleagues support that, was we did that specifically just as a business license under the cannabis rules. So my question for you and Lauren, I know you're a cannabis attorney, not a land use attorney, but it's my understanding, conditional use permit can't be transferred. So I'm not sure how you envision that happening, even if the council were supportive of changing those buffer zones and just doing this kind of thing that you're suggesting and Mr. Bregman is suggesting. So do you know the process for that? Because conditional use permit goes to the planning commission, and it stays with the property that it's on, and if that property were not to be developed and Ms. Shaw left, the conditional use permit would still be active, and Ms. Shaw potentially could sell the business, the medical dispensary. So maybe you can answer. Yeah, I think I know this part. So Ms. Mendelson, maybe you can explain how you see a conditional use permit, which is not transferable, to another property, working without going through the planning commission process, et cetera?
Well, the current code has, you know, she did not have to go through that application process initially, there's specific...
She did back in, back in the day. She did.
Sure.
I think it was a version of the conditional use permit, yes.
So I think what we're looking for is to, perhaps, this could be viewed as a permit amendment instead of a transfer, if that's something that we could do. I think that there could also perhaps just be some kind of a, you know, we're, we're looking for some, some creative ideas, I suppose, as to how that could happen. And I think that if there's additional site, you know, documents related to any changes that are going to have to be made, obviously, there'd have to be building permit applications submitted for those types of changes. There might need to be design review that it would go through, just like any other type of operation, if you're making any of those types of changes to, to the property. But, you know, I, I think that it seems like we can hopefully figure out some solution, maybe. Yeah.
Larry Bregman spent a long time going through this, and he feels that what we've submitted to you, which you have in your emails, is a legal and reasonable amendment to my current license that would work and be legal. So this was his opinion, and he worked on this very hard, along with Lauren.
I also know that Larry Bregman was not a planning commissioner. I would ask our town attorney, I don't think, and perhaps I'm wrong, I sat on the planning commission for a while, I don't think a conditional use permit can be amended to just switch to another property, because it's very specific. Is that correct?
It runs with the land.
Okay. Maybe you could speak into the mic?
Okay. It runs with the land, it stays with that property. And as well, the permits, the cannabis permits are non-transferable, and that is in part of the code too, so nothing is...
And Ms. Mendelson just said that piece, yes.
Thank you.
Okay, so it's not as, there's a little more complicating factors just to think about. I'm sorry, did someone else have a question that, because we could go to public comment?
Well, I did earlier, and thank you, ask, or want for the benefit of, so that we have a common understanding up here and with the public, that the changes, the, the current state, should we greenlight, you know, a relocation, the current code provides that you open it up to a competitive, an application process, is that right? And so your request is to change that process, which, again, was...
And so your request is to change that process, which again, wasn't here, but was established after dozens of meetings and community input. That's what we want to change to support, you know, accelerating your, your relocation. Is that right?
I was grandfathered in as a legacy business.
Right. Yeah. And there's no question or debate about the significance of your contribution to the industry and the legacy of our town. No, no question or debate there, at least from my standpoint. I'm just trying to get a common understanding of the current code, what you're asking for. Of course.
As far as we know from the Department of Cannabis Control, this is the only retail license that doesn't have both medical and recreational, right, in the state. The type of procedures that Lynette has to do, because her permit predates all of the regulations in the industry, add five steps to every transaction. Okay? And so whereas we're talking about amending her current permit, there is no analog in the law. This all happened before these laws were created, including the local laws having to do with opening it up to application for additional licenses to come into the city of Fairfax. So what we're asking for is not to consider apples to apples. This is apples to oranges, as far as we're concerned. And we're asking for your help to find a path forward so that we can continue the business.
I just have another question. So, you know, there's been a lot of talk about the medical cannabis and the need for patients. And the recreational was not back in the day and that was not grandfathered in. We did a special process for Ms. Shaw to help her because there were some financial difficulties. We understood that. But I'd like to ask, are you asking that you would want not only to have the medical be able to be in another location, but also the recreational delivery that I understand is not working in accordance with our code? And I would also remind you that the vast majority of local jurisdictions in the state, unfortunately, decided to ban all these things. So we have been more open than anyone really in Marin. Different process, but I would ask Ms. Mendelson, are you asking that if we were willing to make this change, that I think is a little more significant than what you believe? But are you asking that the medical and recreational delivery be transferred to another location?
The request, yes, and that ultimately they be allowed to come, exist at the same place, consolidate so that there's one permit that's for adult use and medical walk-in and delivery. That's how other similar types of operations operate across the state. That would be one local permit and one state license. And it would be able to, you know, do everything in one rather than having two separate premises. So, so yes, is the answer, be able to move.
Okay. Thank you very much. So let's go to public comment. I want to remind folks that you have two minutes. Thank you very much. Before we start public comment, oh, wait a minute. I just want to ask a question. Are we back on track? Oh, well, it's announced to the public that Zoom is available and during our technical difficulties. Okay, should have interrupted me. Is, just want to let folks know Zoom is available. And I know during our brief technical difficulties, there was something posted on the website. Before we start, Michael, I believe Councilmember Ackerman, you can wait.
I can wait and just make it, get into this.
Let's, let's go ahead.
If I may, I'd like, I have a few things that I'd like to add from Mr. Bragman's letter. If now's the time, great. If it's not, if you want me to wait, I'll wait.
I'm sorry, what?
If you want me to do, I have some things to add from Mr. Bragman's communications. Do you want me to add those now or wait?
Um, go ahead, please.
Okay. So the first thing I have is a copy of a commercial tenancy at School Street Fairfax, notice of termination. It's a letter from an attorney, the Di Martini firm here in Fairfax, July 24th, 2024. Mr. Bragman forwarded that to us. The other one.
Is that the Azazi letter?
That was the first termination letter?
Yes. According to Mr. Bragman, it is dated July 24th, 2024. It is a letter from the law firm Di Martini Walker here in Fairfax to Ms. Shaw. Regarding, it's to dear School Street Plaza tenant, on behalf of the property owner and your landlord, School Street LLC, we want to express our sincere appreciation for your tenancy. Currently, a potential redevelopment of the property is being evaluated in response. Included with this letter is a landlord's 30-day notice to terminate commercial tenancy. They offer to give them additional time, but that is dated July 24th. And then in a letter that Larry sent in, let's see if I can find that. Recently, this is a letter from Larry very recently. He says, as far as the address is concerned, the address in question, he is, he's measured it and he says it is 275 feet from the tutoring center and 297 feet from Caterpillar's daycare.
Okay, thank you. So let's start with Ms. Mendelson.
Is that, okay. With regards to the current code procedure where it talks about the process where if the existing dispensary ceases to operate, there'll be a new, you know, open it up again for some new ones, you know, that, that does not, and that is not, in my mind, designed for a situation where the business ceases to operate through no fault of itself, right? She's being forced to move. It's not like she's choosing to not operate anymore and so we're going to open this up to new people so that there's still dispensaries here. She's being forced to, to move. And so what we're looking for is that this be, not be deemed a cessation in operation. And so perhaps that, that provision that would require you to open this up to new applicants and everything would not be triggered. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael McIntosh.
Hello, council.
Christine, could you do the timer? Sorry.
No problem. Thanks. First off, I certainly encourage our council to keep those things that bring character and uniqueness to our community. I also am the first one up here to chew on you guys about selective enforcement, either doing it or the failure of. And I understand that if you allow her to move to a specific building, what are we opening up? But what if instead we looked at this as a calamity? So most of your CUPs expire after six months. And when I brought up the same consideration about what ordinance 883 for the gas station banned, it was reasonable to extend that to 12 months if we have to work on a tank. But what if right now somebody else is selling their building? Or what if there's a fire that comes through here? Maybe this is the time to consider allowing a CUP under such a condition, whether by no fault of their own, that they have almost a temporary CUP that can be moved to a, or to a property that is deemed by this council as appropriate, but it would allow that CUP not to expire whenever it terminates in either the six or the 12 months. Because think if a fire did come through here. I would assume that 90% of your businesses would fail because they would not be able to find another residence or home within six months. Those CUPs would then expire. So if you look at it like that, maybe this is a good application to consider this, to allow this or a future calamity of a whole building or Arabian sold or redeveloped, or if there's a fire or a big flood, so we can keep our businesses. So please look at it maybe a step further up. That when it's not by a failure of their own operations, we can protect our community. Thanks.
The council would indulge me. I've got Larry Bragman on the phone. He'd like to address you.
Um, I think we have to wait till after public comment. So let him know. Thank you.
Hi, Todd Greenberg, downtown Fairfax. I'm going to not speak about the merits of a particular business, but about how businesses and residents are treated and how the council goes about its process. And I think that Mr. McIntosh might be barking up the right tree in terms of how do we solve this situation that is a result of actions that this town council has taken most expeditiously. So I want to point out that again, number one, this is happening because of your actions to rezone School Street Plaza because members of this council want to put residences there. So we just heard tonight 40-some-odd people have been dislocated. I know a mother and a son who are couch surfing now that are treasured residents here because everyone's being evicted. Your actions on the dais have consequences and they are hurting this town. And Lynette Shaw, who has been a resident here for a long time and is, in her own way, helping people, is being threatened because of a bureaucratic problem that you have created. I think it's incumbent that you figure this out and that you help her to figure it out and you make it a priority. Two, you, you need to be responsible for your actions up on the dais. Three, if you don't, if you don't make this a priority and you don't solve it, you're intentionally driving her out of business. Four, why are you so focused on a bureaucracy rather than?
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Next speaker. Next speaker. Hello?
Hello. My name's Greg Hall. I've lived and worked around Fairfax for the last 20 years. Some of you are smiling and recognize me. I've also recently been working, I think for the third time now for Lynette as a budtender. And I'd like to share with you the most surprising thing I learned working there, which was, oh, sorry. Which is how many of the people that come into that store are my age or older? And they're not coming in looking for weed. They're not coming in looking for a joint. They're coming in looking for medicine. They're looking for an alternative to the opioids that big farmers shoving down their throats and they're saying, what else are the other options? And they're coming in every day asking me, what else can I do? What, tell me about these gummies. Tell me about these tinctures. Tell, tell me about these edibles. They're not in there looking for weed. They're in there looking for medicine. They're in there looking for another option to solve their medical conditions. And we live in the most geriatric county in all of California. And I can tell you, there's a lot of old people out there who can barely make it to our shop. They can't make it into the city to go get their gummies. They can't make it up north. And they can't operate their computer to be able to do the, the mail order, or the online. So having someplace local that they can come to and talk to somebody and explain their problem, explain their issues and ask for recommendations of, hey, what else can I do other than taking these opioids that I can't deal with and I can't drive on and I can't function as a human being, I need another option. And we're that option. And if you allow the Marin Alliance to fade into history, you will be doing a great disservice to this county and the elderly people in this county who truly do depend on that as their one and only source for this medicine that they truly need. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening. Frank Egger from the Cascades. The Fairfax Town Council originally approved Marin Alliance Medical Marijuana Business when I was on a town council decades ago. Lynette Shaw worked to secure a permit, the first legal cannabis business in California. Due to the action by the Fairfax Town Council on December 13th, 2023, approving a housing tower at School Street Plaza, the Marin Alliance is losing its historical business location. The staff report tonight, for tonight's meeting, unfortunately directs the applicant to start the process for permits all over again and to even have to compete with any competitors for the new location. The federal courts confirmed the legality of the Marin Alliance, but the staff report ignores the legal history and has decided there is no precedence here in Fairfax for Marin Alliance. The town can condition a use permit to a specific person, to a specific use and hours of operation. Time is of the essence. Please expedite this process for the move. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, Deb London, Hillside Drive, Fairfax. I just want, I'm standing here in support of Lynette. She is a treasure. She's a pioneer. And because of that, and she also has extenuating circumstances, unfortunately, or fortunately. But I think that it's really important that you find her a way forward. And I do believe I support Todd in that it is your job to do that. And I don't know, maybe Michael McIntosh has something out of the box. Maybe you need to think outside of the box for a minute to help her out. But she needs to stay because God only knows who will get if she can't. Because someone will come and they won't have the integrity she does. And it could be a giant corporation, you know, not giant, but you know, a corporate thing. She's our treasure. So we need to keep her. Please help her find a way forward. Give her the permissions she needs without a mountain of red tape. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Next speaker, please.
Pamela Miggs. I live at 310 Cypress Drive. I am a former planning commissioner and was the chair for two years. I sat through every single meeting. The community supported Lynette and as a nurse, all those years, I've seen it all. And the gentleman that spoke about opiates, he's absolutely right. Marijuana, medicinal marijuana has been a godsend for many people that can live their lives much, much better and easier than being strung out on opiates. The community at the time, from what I can remember, were more supportive and were really here. The rooms were packed, as you said. And we worked it out with Lynette. We helped her and she helped you. I'd like you to look at all those tax dollars you've received every single year she has been here. So I would ask you wholeheartedly to start working together in unity to help her and the businesses when they come to you with these kind of hard problems. It really will help us and help her. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Mallory, Mallory Guy, Fairfax. I'm just going to complete Todd's sentence that you cut her off so quickly about, which you don't do when people you agree with. And the sentence is, the town council can override the planning commission. Okay. And Lynette has been here for a really long time. She has been really a mainstay in Fairfax. We're nitpicking on stuff. You can slide through. If we didn't have such conservative legal advice and we didn't, and we had people who, who came here, who lived here in Fairfax and worked on this panel. And I would, I would just like to recommend that this, this does happen and that we stay loyal to people who have been loyal to the town.
Next speaker, Ciara.
Ciara Salem. I don't even know where to start. You know, when I was a kid, I heard stories about the Romans and the Roman Empire and all the crazy weird stuff and systems they had. And I thought, oh, we're so much different than that now. We're so much better. That's like in the past. I don't condone it, but I think I understand the people that say screw it all and vote for what we have as president coming up. I think there's a certain level of disgust and despair and anger and rage at the dysfunction of our systems and our bureaucracies, which don't have a whole lot of heart. They don't have a whole lot of, kind of wrecks the community. I'm sorry, but the patient died. I'm sorry, but the patient died. Not my problem, not my fault. I couldn't do anything about it. Sorry, it's just the way it is. I think we're as badass loony as the Romans were. Excuse my language. Have we really progressed? I don't know. I think this is something that we can fix if we want to, and I think it'll be a loss. I think we are an aging old population here, and people do need CBDs or whatever they need to take care of their joints and everything else. I know my joints are aging. I don't use, you know, stuff myself, aside from riding my bike, but how do we fix this? What kind of community do we want to have? And how do we take care of our own community? Because this is our community. And other than that, we're failing it.
Thank you, Ciara. Anyone else in the room want to speak? Okay. Is there anyone on Zoom? You know, Mr. Boyd, could you tell Larry Bragman to call in through the Zoom? I don't think it's going to work with your phone held up to the microphone.
Hey, Larry, can you hear me? Okay. Do you want to call into the Zoom, or can you speak a little bit louder?
I can talk if this is loud enough. This is about as loud as I can talk.
That's just fine.
Okay.
Go ahead. You're on. You're addressing the town council.
Okay. Thank you, council. I'm waiting to pick up my bag here at SFO. But I got a question. I received a question from one of the members about the measurements for amending the exclusionary zone. And this situation, the move or the need to relocate, is happening quicker in real time than expected. But I just wanted to address a couple things. I did do measurements from the, there is a tutoring center about 275 feet to the west of the west property line of the proposed property. And there's a daycare about 290 feet from the east property line to the caterpillar daycare to the east. So really, the request for a slight deviation or a slight amendment to the exclusionary zone for those two businesses would go, I think, from the current 350, or 300, rather, to, I think we could safely say, 250 feet. So these businesses are not in the immediate vicinity of the proposed property. The other thing I wanted to mention is that the property is in bankruptcy now. There is a, the owner and proprietor is a senior who lives on the premises. There's two apartments to the rear. And I'm hoping that we can work a deal through the bankruptcy court and his attorney in bankruptcy so that he is benefited by the proposed relocation so that he could remain living where he has been living for quite a few years. So there would hopefully be a benefit for him, too. So I'm sitting here at the terminal. I don't know if I can really carry on much of a conversation with you, but I thought that information would be helpful to you in putting this in context. So thank you very much. And I should be returning to Fairfax shortly and available to talk directly with any of you who have questions. So thanks a lot for letting me speak.
Thank you, Mr. Bragman. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Boyd. Any other people on Zoom? I think we got them all right.
There are three speakers on Zoom.
Oh, I'm sorry. Did I forget to ask that? Okay. I'm sorry. I apologize.
The first speaker is Kay, followed by Kelsey. Kay, you are unmuted.
Hi, everyone. I just want to get for the record, I support 100% Lynette moving. I do understand that there were a ton of meetings. And I do think down the road that we should definitely revisit a recreational license because public perception has really changed. There are so many adorable towns that allow cannabis sales along the coast, and we really need all this tax money. But I do understand that that's going to be a little bit more intricate. But what I would like to hear tonight, I would really like to hear from the town council that you support her, and you're going to reassure her that you're really willing to work with her and do, you know, let's restore the trust in our town government and let's start to heal it and keep Fairfax funky. That's it.
Thank you, Kay. Next speaker, please.
The next speaker is Kelsey, followed by Kristen. Kelsey, you are unmuted.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi. Thank you. This is Kelsey Fernandez, and I, too, was at the meetings when you created the regulations around cannabis businesses. And I know it was done really intentionally to not have recreational marijuana as a storefront. And that goes along with the rest of the county. There are no recreational storefronts in the entire county. So that doesn't seem like just a minor amendment. I know that a lot of public comment went into that. So I'm just curious if the council is going to consider a change of that magnitude, if there would be more of a public process. And so those who spoke up before would also have an opportunity to speak as well. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
The next speaker is Kristen Omly. Kristen, you are unmuted.
Thank you. This is Kristen Omly, and I want to just also support that we need to find ways to make Lynette be able to find a solution at this issue that she is facing at no fault on her own. I'm particularly concerned about how this impacts older adults. Since 1999, more than 80,000 Americans 55 and up have died using these addictive drugs. In 2019 alone, almost 10,300 people aged 55 and older died from opioid overdoses compared to just over 500 10 years earlier in 1999. Opioid misuse is especially dangerous because older people face unique risk factors for opioid overdose. Older people are more likely than younger ones to suffer from chronic conditions and to be prescribed multiple medications, which can make an opioid prescription more likely. As patients get older, they are more likely to have an opioid prescription, according to data published in 2020 by the U.S. Centers for Disease Control and Prevention. Drug abuse is also on the rise among older people. Emergency department visits for opioid misuse rose 220% between 2006 and 2014 in people ages 65 and older. Older people's bodies may be physically less able to metabolize opioids, which can make them more vulnerable to overdoses than younger people. Having medical cannabis available as an alternative to opioids is critical in supporting the health and livelihood and survival of our older adult population. Thank you.
Are there any more speakers on Zoom? To be able to move this meeting along. I know people are supportive, not supportive, but we've got a lot on the agenda. So bringing it back to the council for discussion or direction, or I don't know.
Well, I just heard something that struck me.
Folks can be quiet in the room. If you have a conversation, please take it outside, sir. Mr. Boyd, if you could take it outside. Thank you.
Sorry. I know the problem can be perceived as simple. You just need to relocate and you want our support. But what Kelsey Fernandez just raised, so today you have retail delivery, correct? But you don't have a retail storefront. So that is also what you're amending. But that's an amendment to the code or to the actual permit? Sorry, it is confusing.
So we are truly mixing apples and oranges here. So there's a CUP, and that's a process. It goes through the planning commission.
The CUP is the conditional use permit.
Conditional use permit. It goes through the planning commission. And I just checked with Jeff, and he said that yes, at this particular new location that is being discussed, it would require a CUP. So they'd have to go through planning commission for that. That's entirely separate. We're talking about the two.
Could I just intervene and just clarify? The CUP is, the purpose of the CUP would be to say that it would override the buffer zone?
No.
Or is it just because the dispensary is not one of the permitted uses?
Correct.
That's all the CUP is for? Okay.
Correct. And to determine, for the planning commission to determine whether it's an appropriate use in that zone at that location. Okay. That's one thing. Put that aside for a second. That takes several months to go through that. The other issue are the permits, the cannabis permits.
We're not taking more comments. So you need to sit down, sir. Thank you.
The cannabis permits are the next issue. And they're not transferable from their current location. There are two of them. One is for adult use, delivery only, recreational. The other one is for medical, and it's a storefront. And those are not transferable either by person or location. So going into a new location requires a new permit. And that's what the process is, the opening up the application process, et cetera. So those are two very different and separate things. When you're talking about changing the code, you can change, council can change, Chapter 5.56, anything in there. When you're talking about changing.
That's the business license.
That's the cannabis business permit.
Not everybody knows the code by heart. I'm suspecting.
I don't either. But Chapter 17.110, that's in the zoning code. And that has to go through the planning commission. It has to have a recommendation to the council as to any change to that code. That is not our rule. That is state law. Thank you.
Okay. I'm having a little technical difficulty. I can't turn off my microphone, so hopefully it's not doing feedback. But go ahead, council member.
Sorry. I'm just going to be, in an abundance of clarity, there's two things that would need to go to the planning commission. Is that what I heard? The conditional use permit?
Well, there's the conditional use permit process.
But that's tied to the location.
Yes, it is.
A CUP for the new location is already zoned and okay, from what I understand.
No. There'd be a CUP required at this new location.
Okay.
And that would have to go through the planning commission.
Okay.
And then there are the cannabis permits. And there are a bunch of requested code changes. I have not looked at these in depth because I need to have direction in order to do that. But from glancing at them, they are changing the zoning code. And if the zoning code gets changed, that has to go through planning commission first for a recommendation to the council. And that's not our requirement. That's a state law requirement.
Okay.
So just one clarification. Now, we know that the current location has a conditional use permit for the medical, and then there are two licenses. If we were interested in proceeding along this path that's been proposed, which is a lot of zoning changes, it's not as simple as it may seem on its face, potentially you could say, no CUP needed, just go through the licensing process for a medical dispensary as well as for recreational delivery, right? You wouldn't necessarily have to do a CUP because we're not, I mean, that is specific to the School Street Plaza location, and that was a specific thing that was done back in 1996 or so. So if we were interested, and I don't know where we are on this, in having this location move and making these kinds of changes that are proposed to us, which are zoning changes, potentially we could not go through a conditional use permit process, and we could just go through the licensing process for cannabis for both of those two uses.
No.
Why would you have to do something with a conditional use permit?
Because when you have a zoning map and you have different zones, there are uses that are allowed as of right, and there are uses that are allowed with a conditional use permit, maybe allowed, maybe not allowed. Planning commission has to opine on that. And in this particular zone, from what we can tell, from what we've been told, and we think we know where the location is, I checked with the community development director. He says that requires, it's not an as-of-right use. It would require a conditional use permit.
Okay. So, and I'm not trying to argue, but I have the code in front of me. For medical-use cannabis storefront retailers, it can be permitted in highway commercial and central commercial. Okay? For cannabis, so I'm just talking about cannabis licenses, no CUP. Cannabis delivery-only retailers, highway commercial, central commercial, and limited commercial. I do not know what the zone is for that location that's near the tutoring center, but I believe it may still be highway commercial, or we may have rezoned it to central commercial.
And I understand that. But I think it would, what is contemplated is running, somebody who goes through the process, running them simultaneously through a CUP process as well.
Okay. I'm still not sure that that is a required step. And I think, I know you checked with the planning director, and I think he's on the line. But that, to me, you know, I think we're, we've got, you know, this is a very complicated issue. I know that some folks are making it very simple, and it seems very simple, but it is very complicated. So I'm trying to understand that. And, you know, just going back to where we were at the 23 meetings, and council member Ackerman got on when we were doing Prop 64 many meetings, but I was on for the medical as well. We literally had at least 100 people here to testify and had a lot of concerns. And that's where the council came up with all these buffers. So, you know, there was a lot there. And I also want to just clarify is that there seems to be a case being made for why medical is so important. But I don't see a case being made for recreational delivery, which, you know, I don't use these products, but I think that's a relatively easy thing to get in Marin County. Medical dispensary is not because there are no other ones. Is that correct?
I really would not have.
Yeah. I mean, mostly everybody banned things, except, and we were the only one that allowed a medical dispensary. At one point, the county was talking about recreational storefronts, but they never allowed any. Council member Cutrano.
Yes. I just have a quick, practical question. So Janet, you have the command over the process that one would have to undertake to make the necessary changes to accommodate anything like this. From a timing perspective, if there are two concurrent processes, one for a CUP and one for any number of permits from any number of uses, medical or recreational, what's the actual, like, timing that we would be able to do this under? Are we talking, you know, the, and Jeff's, I know Jeff's on the call, too. So is it that November for planning commission is booked out? So this is something that might be heard at a December meeting, just hypothetically? And then we would get a recommendation back to the town council following that in January, all of this happening? It would be up to Lynette and her colleagues to coordinate with the property owner to let them know that there's this process playing out and that they would need additional time? Like, what's the actual timeframe we're talking about, like, in the real world?
Well, are you talking about going through the?
Making the necessary changes to accommodate the request. What's the actual timing?
Code changes?
Yeah. And the permitting and all that stuff so that they, that they're able to move to a new location with certainty so they can initiate the process for the state license, given that it takes a lot of time to do that part?
I think, I just want to ask a clarifying question of council member Cutrano. There's kind of two sort of issues on the table, which is, one is this different process that's being proposed by Mr. Bragman and company. And then there's the process that's kind of.
I'm not talking about the current process where we open it up to a bunch of applicants. I'm not talking about the current process, where we open it up to a bunch of applicants. I'm talking about specifically trying to make this happen.
Okay, that's all I wanted to clarify.
So what I would recommend is that we, staff takes the proposal that has been put forward, and with the input from the council as to what you actually would like to do, come back with a, an outline of what code changes we would recommend, and which ones we would not, and why, and what the implication would be of some of those code changes. And then you would give us direction to start the process. We would then go to the Planning Commission for the code changes in Title 17, not in Title V. And try to keep it running concurrently such that changes to Title V, Chapter 5.56, and changes to 17.110, either a positive or negative recommendation from the Planning Commission, would come back to the council at the same time. And so the council wouldn't have separate hearings on, because those two codes go together. They mesh, and they have to mesh. And that's one of the things that makes it difficult about changing a piece here and a piece there. They have to work together. And so I would like to see both of those chapters come, the changes come, back to council at the same time. And so we would, we would time it to where Planning Commission would hear 17, give a recommendation to council, and then we would bring V with 17 back to council. That would take a period of several months to do.
So like, coming back to council, January or February?
Coming back to council, probably no, early February, maybe Planning Commission in January. In December, you would have a report from us about the exact process, what has to be done, these are the changes, these are the implications, here's what else that changes, if you change this, et cetera. And then you would give us direction to maybe do some part of it, maybe not all of it, and, and we would change it accordingly, and then proceed on to go to Planning Commission. And how long it would take Planning Commission to, to hear it and decide to give a recommendation to council, I don't know. It, it used to be quite rare to have a one, one Planning Commission hearing. Might take more than one. And, but it would come back to council, and I would not think that would be back at council with noticing provisions that are required. I think it would be a real stretch to say that would be at council, maybe in February, but might be a special meeting for an introduction, could be, it has to be a regular meeting for an adoption, that might be March. But I would think, you know, it could go into April. And so I think it's a period of at least three, four, or five months.
Okay, so if I could just continue really quickly with, thank you for the hypothetical, but I think that creates some time boundedness to help us understand what's practical. Looking to the, to the folks that brought the petition, any, any vibe check from you all hearing this timeline that we're talking about?
Just one clarification. So if, you know, given that timeline, coming back to the council, let's assume the April for the second reading, then it takes 30 days beyond that to actually take effect. So it'd be May, just, okay, go ahead. We probably only need one speaker, not three, for everything, but do whatever works.
We can work with that.
Okay.
It's, it would be the difference between the other process that was proposed, which would be nine to 12 months and put us out of business, and this way we would be able to stay in business, acquire the property that we need, and move forward.
Great. Thanks for stepping up to the mic and responding to that. I know it's slightly unusual. I'll just conclude by saying, I would recommend that you all pursue it, maybe not the full kit and caboodle, but maybe just the, the main pieces that need to happen, and then any of the additional detail and flair that's in the recommended ordinance changes comes up at a later date. But just trying to expedite the process is, keep it as simple as possible, so that we can try to keep to that schedule. But that's just my take.
Okay, oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Ackerman.
So, yeah, I appreciate that exploration of the timeline. And I just wanted to say, first of all, for myself, that I would, it sounds like all of us that have spoken so far, would like to see this work. We'd like to make it work. So that's, the question is how to make it work, how to expedite it. And at the same time, how to have public input on it as needed, because we did have many, many meetings on cannabis, and we did have a wide spectrum of opinions. And I think it was one of Fairfax's better hours, in a way, not an hour, but more like years. But I think we got through it, and we came to, came to sort of a community consensus about how to handle this. And so I would not be comfortable with council changing the, changing substantially what the boundaries are, or whatever, without public input. And right now, tonight, this wasn't, we can't take action tonight. As I understand, there's no action we can take tonight, other than to direct staff to, to do something, which is what it sounds like we, we might be doing. But the, there are several different paths that I, I like the idea of trying to do them in parallel. So the Planning Commission, it sounds like, needs to address the, the zoning changes, if there will be any regarding the, the buffer zones. And in order to do that, they need to know what, I think we've got a request before us as to what those buffers could be, so that's probably all we need. But that, there is more than that in the draft, in the, in the email that we received. There's, there's changes to the buffers around schools, for example, and around youth centers, which it doesn't sound like they are needed immediately to solve this problem. So maybe focus on the things that are really needed. I'm also curious as to the, the limitations, and this is a question, I believe, for Ms. Mendelson. You had mentioned that, I think it was you that was mentioning, that the application to, for your California license can't begin, or can you just clarify what the, what the limitations are with regard to how long the town's process, how far the town's process needs to go in order to get started on that process?
Sure. Really, we need an address, a specific location that the license is going to be for, before we can submit the application for the state license. And so, you know.
You don't, you don't have to actually be in that location.
That's correct.
You just need to be-
You just need to know what it, what that address is, and then you won't be able to change that without submitting a new application.
So that in turn means that you want to be to a, at least a pretty reasonable point of being an escrow on, as it were, and being able to get into that location. And in order to do that, you need to know that you can invest in that. And in order to know that, you need to know that we're at least likely-
Exactly.
-to be able to complete this process in time.
Indeed, indeed. And I, I would just, you know, kind of remind council that there's a number of places in Chapter 5 and Chapter 17 where, you know, the existing medical marijuana dispensary is being referred to. Clearly, that is the Marin Alliance, and there's places where it explains how that, you know, the existing dispensary does not have to go through the same application process and the permit procedure as other businesses would. And so I, I just ask for your creativity in finding a solution that's, what we're asking for, I do not think is, is out of line with the spirit of the code, which clearly recognizes that this, that this business is a legacy business, and did not have to, even according to the code, follow the same procedures as other businesses. And I also, you know, encourage you to consider the constitutional implications of the, you know, the redevelopment, the rezoning decision, as well as the decision tonight, in terms of potential takings issues. So please, you know, take this, take this seriously, as, as Ms. Shaw certainly is.
And so the, if we can explore, it sounds like we're moving toward asking primarily you, Janet, to, and maybe the planning director as well, to just explore and bring us back direction as to what, what might be, or information as to what might be possible, and what the most expedited process might be. I'm not sure if that's what the council is coming to, but just let me, let me mention one thing, and then I'll stop. That, as, as Wes just said, the, a lot of the current ordinance refers to this, in an indirect way, refers to this specific business. It refers to a business that was in, in operation before a certain date. I guess there's two things I want to say. This is one of them. Some of the things that we might look at, might, we might want to just apply them to all businesses. For example, if we change the buffer zone, I don't, I would think it might make sense. Changing a buffer zone around a daycare or a, and I believe I was the person in, if I remember right, in all those meetings that, that raised the question as to, maybe we should have a smaller buffer zone around a daycare, because the daycare kids don't tend to run around as, as far. But reducing that buffer zone, it isn't necessarily something we have to do only for a business that was in operation before a certain date. It could be maybe for all businesses. But just those, those are the things to explore. One other, what was it? There was one other thought that I, that I was gonna bring up that, never mind, I'll get back to it. Okay.
Okay, I did want to hear from Council Vice Mayor Blash.
May I, before, before you begin, may I add one thing? When we drafted the code, the Chapter 5.56 and the 17.110, it was deliberate to exempt Marin Alliance at that location, where they had been operating for a number of years. We did not have any intention of making them go through the process to try to make that location meet the, the requirements that were being drafted. So they were exempt from that. As well, there was an exemption for them to have adult-use delivery only. And it's important to remember that it was because it had been operating at that location without any difficulty for a number of years that we went that route. It was contemplated that, should they ever leave that location, that any new location would have to be vetted, whereas that one had not necessarily been vetted, certainly through this process, but that any new location would have to be. So that's, that's some of the history and some of the reason why you see the code written the way it is, because there were specific exemptions for Marin Alliance at that particular location, because they had been there for so long with no issues.
And I, the, the other point I wanted to make was, or suggestion, is that the, in particular, it seems like one of the issues here that, that the applicants are asking for is to not have to have the town open up the application process, and then wait for a certain amount of time, and then those applications have to be vetted by the Planning Commission, and scored by the Planning Commission, and then they come to council. So that whole process is something that would, would occur if someone new were to come and make an application, or want to make an application in town, for example. It, I'm just suggesting that it might be something to think about, as you look at our options, that that process could be something that doesn't have to happen when any cannabis business, should there, should any cannabis business be already operating in town and want to move their license to a new place in town, then that, that that may not necessarily trigger the opening of a full application process. So just suggesting that that part doesn't necessarily have to be an exemption for this particular business only, but could be an exemption for, because this particular business is, would be moving away from that location. So the specialness of that location is sort of in history now. Anyway, just another-
Okay.
-bit of freedom we might have.
Thank you. I mean, I think one of the things, were we to proceed down this path, is opening a can of worms on everything is really for something that doesn't exist currently. You know, there are no other existing businesses, and that may not ever happen, or that may happen in the near future, so, or in the long-term future. Vice Mayor Blash?
Yeah, I just wanted to confirm again. So if we go down this path, does that reopen? I didn't get a clear idea. It doesn't reopen the window so that other people come in and apply?
That's only if you open up the application period pursuant to the way the code is written right now.
So we don't-
If you, if, if the manager, it's, there's actually a requirement that the application period be opened if there are fewer than two establishments in town.
Okay.
We have had absolutely no inquiry since Element 7. And so there's, there's been no inquiry. So there's been no, no interest in opening up the, the application process.
Okay, so then if we do this, you know, I mean, I know there's a lot of questions, but then it means that the dispensary is actually still in business, which means that there's not less than two, which means we don't have to go through that process, right?
It's, it's still less than two.
Yeah.
It's still less than two. I'm sorry, less than two. Okay, never mind. I was thinking less than one, but.
Well, what I'm, what I'm hearing, and maybe this, I should ask if this is correct, is that you would like for us to take what was submitted and give you a report back on it, what it would mean if you changed the codes, how it would impact potential other businesses, or the, the process as a whole that's laid out in the code right now. Is that what I'm hearing?
I think, I think that's probably true. Let's hear from Councilmember, oh, I'm sorry, did you have more?
Just wanted to finish. So no, that, that helps, because I just want to understand. For me, I would really like to see this business stay in Fairfax, because it's got such historic significance and such community support. And, you know, it does concern me about, you know, a large corporate group coming in. So the other concern that I have, so I'm like supportive of that, is that I wasn't on the council at the time that this happened, but I watched a bunch of the meetings, and there was so much impassioned comment, and a lot of people came and were very concerned about child safety and all kinds of things. So it just seems like, yeah, we need to have a process whereby people who have those concerns can, you know, come back and say what they need to say. And I'm not hearing that tonight from the audience here, so I'm just not sure if that's gone away, or if it's just that people didn't know that this was coming up. So I just want to keep the transparency out there. And, yeah, that's all I need to say. I just wanted to kind of double-check on those things and say, like, yeah, if it was feasible, it sounds great. We'll have to see what you have to say when you come back to us.
So just to be clear, should we proceed down this path, there would be public notice to people within X number of feet. So there would be a much broader public notice. And I don't know, we somehow have the idea that everybody follows our agendas. I don't think that's necessarily true. So I think we'll hear more, should we go down this path. Councilmember Helman?
Oh, I was just gonna say, I thought you were looking up for, like, an indication of support, which I do. Thought that's what we were doing.
Okay, I have one change to what I would view as support for moving down this path. And the next step would be for you to bring us kind of the information, et cetera, pros and cons, all that kind of thing. I'm hearing a lot of support for a medical cannabis dispensary. I think the recreational delivery was a separate piece, and I know the way it's operating now is not within our code requirements. I would be supportive of moving forward with this for the medical storefront cannabis dispensary, but not necessarily for the recreational. And that's, okay, so can you just speak quiet? We allowed folks to speak. That's my thoughts. I don't know if other council members support that, but that's where I'm thinking on this. And I did see through all those meetings. And I did sit through all those meetings, and it was a very deliberative process. I wasn't supportive of all the changes that were made in the restrictions, but I'd like to see us be able to proceed down this path. But I hear a lot of support for medical cannabis dispensary, also with the idea that people have a place to go to actually talk to someone rather than going into San Francisco or going up to Santa Rosa. Councilmember Ackerman?
Yeah, I, I was wondering, and I'll kind of put a little twist on that, that it might be, and you can explore this if you would, when you bring us the information you'll bring us, the, if, if there is a way that the whole process can move more quickly, if the medical part, I mean, if the recreational delivery part is held aside while the medical storefront part is moved forward, then it would be good to know that. And then maybe that the recreational delivery part can catch up later, can be another process, but since it seems that the, really time is the biggest factor here trying to.
Well, I think part of what I would suggest is that in the pros and cons, you can point out that as a con or a pro. And so as you bring that back, sorry to interrupt Councilmember Ackerman, but let's, I think you have direction to proceed down the path that you proposed. One piece, or that was proposed with a twist. So chapter 17 going to the Planning Commission, chapter 17 and 5.5 coming back to the council, but the first piece is to come back with more information with pros and cons. I would also ask you to look at more carefully if a conditional use permit is really required at that location. We're doing a lot of stuff on the fly here tonight.
Can I clarify one thing, too?
I'd really like to have an address for the location.
Yeah, and we would need that. So I would just ask Ms. Mendelson or Mr. Bragman to supply the specific address rather than this sort of nebulous idea. Councilmember Cacciano?
And just to confirm that what we're discussing right now, in terms of direction, is in alignment with this timeline that you, you were bringing up earlier. Is that right?
Yes, that's a, is an estimate.
Yep.
Okay, I cannot guarantee that, but yes, that's, the, the steps that are required are come back to council, get direction on exactly what's gonna go to Planning Commission, what's gonna come back here, go to Planning Commission, one, two hearings, I don't know, and then come back here with both pieces, the piece that had to go to planning and the piece that didn't. And there will be more information as to, you know, if we get an address, we can say whether there's a CUP required or not. There was also, when we drafted these codes, we were contemplating also potentially design review, et cetera, and all of that information is contained in that application that somebody fills out. It has site plans, it has building plans, et cetera, and how they're gonna operate and, and what their security is, and all of that information is in there. So without that application, you know, we wouldn't have that. And, but I do need an address because that's, that's gonna be a really critical part.
I just have one more thing, which is in addition to you all furnishing that address pronto, perhaps in your conversations with the property owner, if they need some sort of correspondence from the town that we're trying to evaluate these things, let the town staff know and the mayor know, and perhaps something could be furnished to the property owner just so that they have a better sense of what's, what's at play right now.
I think the other piece is just when you come back to us, we would need some information from the Ms. Shaw and company on what is the security, what are those kinds of things? We can't necessarily assume that what's been done at School Street Plaza is the same. So I think you should have a list of what we would need after we get through all this process so they can be in the process of putting that together.
One more question, as it, just so I can, I can be clear on this. Did you want me to look at just the medical storefront?
Well, I think that the rest of the council doesn't necessarily agree with my thoughts. So I think what we talked about is when you discuss the pros and cons of this, to bring that up. And then as we provide more direction, you know, get more clarity on, is that the right, you know, is it the right path to include two or just one?
And it's hard to make any sort of determination or provide direction with that kind of specificity right now without knowing how that actually complicates Ms. Shaw's permit application or license application at the state level. I don't know, like, how, how all that stuff works between recreational delivery stuff versus medical storefront. So I think maybe if you bring it back broad enough, we'll have more clarity at a later point in time from her, what, what is actually expeditious and what's kind of a pain. So that'd be helpful.
Okay, so I would propose that we take a five-minute break, as I think the next item is gonna go a bit long. Let's try to get back here at 8:21. Thank you.
I'll just start by saying, one of the things that I wanted to do here is just kind of give people a roadmap to this discussion so that, you know, people feel like they know what to expect and that they will be heard, and there's no need to, you know, kind of jump up and shout out in the middle of the presentation. So in terms of the discussion process for this item today, can you go to the next slide, please? The, we're gonna hear the council subcommittee's report, and this includes the ongoing efforts to address homelessness. And we've heard those presentations somewhat before, but this is a new report. And then also consider the recent developments, including the Supreme Court decision on Grants Pass, and then the governor's executive order to state agencies. Those are fairly recent items that have come up, and then the, the town and all of the council members have been really studying that, those issues and possible resolutions for the encampment specifically behind the pavilion. We will also have a discussion on the police press logs that were included in the packet, and so the town attorney will be able to answer questions specific to those, because I know people do have that, a lot of questions about that. And then in terms of next steps, we're asking that the council have a discussion, ask questions, there'll be public comment, then it'll come back to the council, and the council can decide whether to, in fact, direct staff to come back with, say, an anti-camping ordinance and ask for other things like implementation timeline and some of the implications in terms of budget and other resources that will be needed. So with that, I want to turn it over to Vice Mayor Blash to talk about the report.
Great, thank you. And I'm gonna do a lot of the presentation, and then Councilmember Cacciano will also add in here, if we could, have the next slide? Okay, so I'm just gonna go over a little bit of the history and the demographics. I went back through the homeless point in time counts to really look at the number of homeless that have been counted here generally every January, although there were some gaps in there with COVID. So we've had kind of a steady number of individuals. I remember when it dropped off to five, because I kept thinking, wow, what happened there? But then the last couple of years, you know, it's gone back up to where it was before, and some of that may be due to changes in the number of people that are here, some of it may be due to changes in the methodology used. I know that Councilmember Cacciano and Hellman and I all took part in the homeless point in time count this year, and it was a very labor-intensive process. So I wanted to note that we have somewhere around 17 homeless people in town as of the last homeless point in time count, which was in January, and most of those people don't live in the encampment. And often my experience with them is that they just are very quiet, and they stay to themselves, and they want to stay under the radar. We've had a number of local people who have been homeless here, including a business owner who ended up living in his car due to, due to some catastrophes. Lot of the people that have lived here have been long-term homeless and have been beloved community members, and some of the encampment members, both the prior crew and the current crew, have family or friends in town, not all, but some. So, you know, there's different levels of engagement with the community. The encampment itself is kind of a new phenomenon. I mean, it's, it started in around 2021, but wasn't something that we saw before. You know, I know when I moved here, people were constantly going down the street to the creeks, they could go over into the Town and Country Club. It kind of seemed like it was a constant stream, and then that changed. So, you know, I've been kind of aware of people coming and going over the years. So, but usually they were, you know, hiding out somewhere else. So we had the encampment since 2021, when it was about two people. In 2023, so the encampment was for a while right behind the Public Works Building, and there was a fire, and that encampment then moved up near the ball field due to the fire. So the encampment population itself has fluctuated in number, generally housing between four and five people. Right now, I think there might be as many as six. Sometimes it's hard to tell because there are a number of visitors who, you know, when we were last there, there were a number of people said, I don't actually live here. So there are a number of housed visitors, there are case managers and outreach workers, so, and, and other people who visit. So sometimes it's hard to tell. And it also goes up and down a little bit over time. So we have this dashboard that appears for the county, and the county is, you know, keeping track of who's there, and so they update it once a month. So if there were four people last month, that might say four people now, when there are actually six people because two other people moved in, and two other people moved out or what have you. So some people who are not homeless visit the camp a lot, and some people who are not homeless have been misperceived as homeless because they've kind of exhibited behaviors that we, you know, may find unusual. There's been a lot greater visibility about the encampment and homelessness in general because, A, we have an encampment, and B, it moved into a more public place, so then there's been a lot more discomfort and potential for conflict because of where it is. So in terms of our response as the homeless subcommittee, we formed a homeless ad hoc subcommittee in October of 2023 to address homelessness in Fairfax. And for me, homelessness is not just the encampment. There are other issues that we have looked at and dealt with, such as preventing homelessness in the first place, as well as helping those who are more hidden access services. The encampment has become a big focus, but there are a number of different items here. So because of the delicate legal and logistical issues involved, we've been very careful about, and deliberate about how we have approached the encampment issue. And can you go to the next slide, please? We have had frequent meetings with our police department, or, you know, our police chief, the director of the Public Works Department, with the town manager, with the town attorney. We have, you know, to assess if there's a public health risk, because that's always been top of mind. We have continued to work with the County of Marin because they are basically the people who are providing the services. And they have provided consistent services to the encampments since the encampment was there. And I will ask, I think Gary, is Gary on the line now? Gary Naharis?
Yes.
I'll ask folks in the audience to not call out. Let's let Vice Mayor Blash go through this, and it may be that some of you have heard things in the past, but others have not.
Right, so I'm going to not ask him right now, but I may ask, you know, our county director of whole person care, you know, to maybe explain the housing-first model that we've been using, well, we've been using, they've been using with our encampment. We don't have a social services department in Fairfax. We really depend on the county to deal with these things. So I'm just gonna go over a quick timeline. You know, there've been a couple of legal cases that the Ninth Circuit Court took up that for quite a long time really precluded. They deemed that it was cruel and unusual punishment under the Eighth Amendment of the U.S. Constitution to basically forbid people to camp on public land if they had nowhere else to go. And that case, those couple of cases has made it very difficult to take a number of actions, and the people that have taken actions have often faced a lot of legal suits. And so that one was a little bit challenging in some ways in terms of us being able to respond. In terms of other issues on the timeline, I'm just gonna say, so the encampment started around 2021. The first two campers that were there have been housed. In October 2023, because we had an ongoing encampment, we formed the Fairfax Ad Hoc Homelessness Subcommittee. Councilmember Cacciano and I are both on that. We are also part of the Marin County Council of Mayors and Council Members Homeless Subcommittee, which meets periodically to talk about a more county-wide approach and picture of this. In January 2024, a number of us, as I mentioned before, took part in the homeless point in time count, and Councilmember Cacciano and Hellman did that here in Fairfax, and I was assigned elsewhere. In April of 2024, I just wanted to mention that we have been working with, I'm gonna backtrack a little bit, so I'm gonna sort of put a pin there on April 2024. So we did a number of activities during this time, and I've included a log of my activities in the staff report, and I'm, kind of have a caveat in there that I actually do a lot more than that is in that log. But, you know, just to give an example, the subcommittee has visited the encampment a number of times, met with social service providers, county staff, legal experts, and our own staff to understand the situation better and seek solutions. And we ran into a number of dead ends, especially because of those two court rulings. As I said again, it was not really legal to preclude people from camping on public land if you didn't have some other place where they could go. And, you know, a lot of people will be aware of what's happened in Nevada and San Rafael, where they told people they couldn't camp in certain areas, but what they ended up having to do was to tell them, you can't camp in these areas, but now we have to have somewhere else where you can actually go, right? And in Fairfax, that was a little trickier because we're so small, we don't have a lot of public land, so we can't say, you can't camp near a school or a park, but go down to Mahone Path and you can camp there. Like, we couldn't do that. So we had a little bit of a, an impasse there, because I think for a lot of us, you know, we'd like to not have the encampment where it is now, but there really wasn't anywhere else legally for us to tell them to go, as far as we could tell. So in March or April, I think it was like April of 2024, you know, Councilmember Cacciano and I have been meeting with the county kind of consistently, and we're like, look, you know, we're seeing that the other communities in the county are getting these encampment resolution funds, can we get those? And he said, well, I think, you know, because the county's kind of helping to apply for those and manage those, and he was like, well, I think you guys are really too small to even really count as an encampment, but I'll, I'll try to find something for you because we know you need help. And we have been paying into a program called the High Utilizer Case Management Program for quite some time, and they were able to work with our police chief and identify certain people in the camp who might be eligible for this program, which would expedite them getting housing vouchers and getting into housing. So we were really excited about that because, you know, I think the real goal for a lot of this is to get the camp to start clearing out a little bit, but also to get those people in the housing so they just don't get moved around all the time they actually achieve housing and become unhomeless. Okay, so while we were working on this, we were waiting for this, you know, to bear fruit and get those folks housed, and it was taking longer than we expected, and I'll talk about why that is in a minute. On June 28th, the Supreme Court took up the Grants Pass case and ruled that it is not cruel and unusual punishment to enact camping bans under the Eighth Amendment of the U.S. Constitution. Doesn't mean that other people can't bring, you know, legal suits under other parts of the Constitution, but that's where it ended. And shortly after that, about a month after that, Governor Newsom directed state agencies to clear encampment on state, encampments on state lands. So we met with legal experts and other members of county, city councils and town councils, and the thing that we were sort of told by the and the thing that we were sort of told by the legal experts and others was, you know, "You're a really small town. You don't have a huge amount of money for lawsuits. You probably don't want to drop $2 million on a lawsuit right now. Give it a little time, let the larger cities start to move and see what they do, and then see what you can maybe do around this issue." So, we have been coordinating with other cities in the county and with the county itself to, you know, look at how this is going to unfold. So, I just wanted to talk, if we could go to the next slide, please? And as you noticed, I guess one thing I missed on the timeline is that we issued our report about a year after we started this process, and it's on the town's website and in the staff report. So, in terms of current services, I just, you know, I hear from some people, they say, "Well, nobody's getting any services. They're not being monitored. Nothing's happening over there." People are receiving outreach visits. I've confirmed this repeatedly with the social service people and with the campers themselves. They also receive, some of them receive case management visits. The police patrols the area regularly as just part of their regular beat, and they know people by name, and they often, you know, check out, check in with them. We did also pay into a shower program that provides showers weekly. We coordinate with, or the Public Works Department coordinates with the campers to have them bring debris down to the area by where we sometimes distribute compost so that they can, you know, get rid of waste that might be accumulating there. And then finally, we confirmed again with the campers that many of them use the public restroom at the police station, which is open 24/7, and they all seemed astonished to think that people thought that they were, you know, pooping in their own encampment. You know, so that's just what they told us. Okay. So, can we have the next slide, please? So, I just wanted to talk about some of the challenges we've faced besides the two court cases. So, first off, very few shelter openings. That has been consistent and confirmed that again with a large number of people over the last couple of weeks. And they say, yes, there are shelter openings, there are four or five a week, but there's, you know, 20 to 50 people per four or five openings, and that, you know, a lot of people, a lot of social service agencies are trying to refer people to those openings and not being able to get their people in. So, some people get in, some people don't. It's kind of a frustrating process. One of the other things that's happening around this challenge is just that, you know, we have an overall lack of affordable housing, so when you want to move people out of a shelter into housing, you know, once you're in a shelter, you're probably not having much of any income, although some people are working, and so it's very hard to afford housing, and the goal is to get them into housing, but if there's nowhere to move them to, you know, they stay in the shelter for a very long time. Coupled with that is the fact that often to, if you're very, very low income, you can't even afford some of the affordable housing out there, you need a housing voucher. And housing vouchers are issued by the U.S. government, like, we don't have any control about that, and then the county sort of manages them. And people can tell me if I'm, you know, I, you know, try to get all those pieces right, but if I miss something, you know, let me know. So, there are definitely not enough vouchers for the people who need them, and the waiting list is usually closed, and then people that get on the waiting list often wait for years. So, there are, right now, there's a little bit of a logjam in terms of the counties having any vouchers for people. So, few people are leaving the shelters because they can't access permanent supportive housing because they can't get a voucher. There are some things changing in the picture now, and there will be in the future, but that's just what we've heard from numerous social service providers. And then, you know, another challenge is that the congregate shelter may not be what a lot of people want to do. It may not be appropriate for some people, especially people who are chronically homeless. And I'm going to give a quote from Paul Fordham, who says, "We can only help those willing to come in, but it doesn't mean that they don't want housing. They often just don't want congregate shelters." I think they had 15 people from the Lee Gerner Camp in Nevada when it burned down, and they took hotel vouchers. People were very happy to stay in separate rooms in hotels, but once they were going to go into the congregate shelter, I think five were interested in moving into Jonathan's Place, which used to be called the Mill Street Shelter. Two enrolled, and only one actually ended up continuing to be in shelter there. So, there are challenges in that respect. So, I just wanted to sort of lay out there some of the challenges that we faced above and beyond the court cases that are, you know, sort of global to the county, and just note that there are people providing services out there, even though you may not, you know, see them or know who they are. All right. So, can we go to the next slide, please? Right. So, we, you know, have taken a number of, the perspectives of a number of stakeholders into account when trying to seek solutions. So, you know, there are concerns about how to balance the rights and well-being of, you know, sort of a vulnerable minority with the concerns of a larger group of local housed residents who are feeling like there's a real safety issue here. Another issue that we try to take into consideration is, you know, how do you avoid excess costs or liability, you know, for the community and the town in particular? You know, that's taxpayer money, and we've heard from a number of taxpayers that they are not happy with us spending a lot of money on legal fees. Another issue is responsibility to the Greater Marin and the community in which we exist. Do we want to just push people down the road to another community that's less well-off or less equipped to take the campers? And then unintended consequences. Do you want to push people into, further out into the hills where they present more of a danger if they set something on fire? Do you want to put them somewhere where they're less likely to get services or get into housing in the end? You know, all of these things have to be taken into account. And, you know, we might talk some about, I'm not going to go over this one point right now, but we really need a strategy that is logistically feasible and fair. And we looked at, I know Councilmember Catrano in particular looked if there was any land where we could put a sanctioned encampment, as they've done in San Rafael and Nevada. We just are very limited in terms of space. We also, it's also quite costly to run. Like, you know, with a community, you would have to be willing to spend, you know, a couple hundred thousand setting it up, and then, you know, $185,000 a year or something to run it. We considered whether we could create a shelter, and, you know, we are not social service providers. We don't have a social services department here in Fairfax, you know, but, you know, maybe you could buy a house and hire somebody, and again, buying a house in Fairfax is extremely expensive. Neighbors would be very upset, and social services are very expensive. And then finally, you know, we could look at anti-camping ordinance, but we've been really encouraged by a number of people to try to find a way to make sure that people have enough time to plan and move. We know that there may be more housing vouchers available in 2025, we hope in January, but we're not sure. Additional shelter space, maybe opening with Homeward Bound in March. And, you know, there's some concerns about moving people during the holiday season when it's dark and rainy. It just seems inhumane to some people. Let's see. And then there is some, you know, interest in the fact that activity at the ball field will die down for a month or two, which may provide a little more time. And then again, the final thing is that, you know, with this process, we need to hire somebody who, we would need to hire a company that could store people's possessions if indeed we moved, we wanted to move people out. And that is a whole process in and of itself that's a legal process. And so, that's my report. I don't know if you have anything you want to add.
Yeah. Thank you, Vice Mayor Blash. I just have a couple of--
You can move the slide.
--a couple of things to maybe add a little color. I think, well, first off, I guess in terms of the timeline, something to think about, last year while I was mayor, we were hearing a lot of folks who wanted the encampment closed, and there happened to be a moment in time when there was an attempted arson to unhoused folks, getting into a dispute, one threatening the other with a flame. This was all when the encampment was tucked down behind the corporation yard where our Department of Public Works are staffed, and we, I called an emergency meeting with the police chief, with the fire chief, with our building inspector, with our director of public works, and we went back there, and we documented everything, and we made a decision to close the encampment. And we decided to spend the money. We figured out what the legal risks would be associated with making sure we collected everyone's belongings. People might have social security numbers, birth certificates, you know, there's stuff covered in fire retardant, so it really needed to be cleaned up. But we, you know, even if stuff was covered in fire retardant, we had a professional team come out and collect everyone's stuff and store it properly and hold it for 90 days, and people could access their stuff and reach out to the police department. And this is something that the community had been asking for, conveniently enough, that, you know, they wanted to see that encampment shut down. And lo and behold, you know, people don't just disappear into thin air. When we did that and when we fenced off that area, folks appeared in other parts of town and started putting up tents in other parts of town, much to the chagrin of other residents in other parts of town, at Doc Edgar Park in particular, but there were folks that started sleeping at the Good Earth, et cetera. And so, it's just a point of reference when we talk about, you know, just moving people, just shutting things down. Things don't just magically get fixed, like, people aren't furniture that you just pack up and put them away out of sight, like, they can move to different areas. So, just wanted to add that little piece of color for the timeline. I think the other thing as far as vouchers, just because that's such a wonky thing that we hear about from the county when we meet with colleagues that are all trying to get their hands on vouchers to house folks in different parts of Marin. But one thing that I learned over the last couple of years is that there were a bunch of COVID vouchers that came from the federal government, and unfortunately, these were one-time vouchers that expired, that don't get to continue to be recycled as people have a voucher, maybe they get a job, maybe they don't income qualify for the voucher anymore, and then it can be given to someone else. If they were given a COVID voucher instead of a Section 8 voucher, that goes poof after a certain period of time, and that was a real issue coming out of the pandemic, but basically last year, something that we brought up with Assemblymember Connolly, with Senator McGuire, with Congressman Huffman. It seemed like a kind of a no-brainer if these vouchers were already being circulated and used in our community to fight for more of these COVID vouchers to be retained in the community. Unfortunately, that was not the case, and we were not successful. And I, for the folks in the room, the folks listening to this, I'd hope that everyone could join long-term in helping to advocate to state and federal officials for these sorts of instruments that have proven to be effective in getting folks housed. And unfortunately, you know, we're just continuing to knock on the door saying we need more vouchers. The other thing is, as far as court cases, I just wanted to clarify, we didn't just, like, meet with Janet or folks, our town attorney, or folks from BBK. Lysel and I, Vice Mayor Blash and I, I'm sorry, we met with the attorneys that represented Grants Pass. We met with the attorneys that filed the amicus brief on behalf of the city of San Francisco. These are folks that litigated the case before the Supreme Court. We went to San Francisco, and we met with these individuals, and they were the ones that were providing the legal advice to us, to council members from Mill Valley, who also were in attendance, to housing service providers all across the Bay Area, that, yes, this is, this win at the Supreme Court that they achieved was narrowly about whether or not this was cruel and unusual punishment under the Eighth Amendment of the Constitution. It was not, this is the panacea that everybody's been waiting for, which means that there, as Vice Mayor Blash had mentioned, there's bound to be more legal challenges to municipalities doing X, Y, or Z, trying to figure out how we solve encampment issues. So, there's, it's not like legal risk is gone. There's still questions outstanding about due process, et cetera, which is why anything we decide from the potential strategies has to take in mind due process per the U.S. Constitution and making sure people have enough time to have notice, to properly pack up things, to move things, if that's ultimately what's decided upon. I think a couple of things that I also wanted to share regarding land, I think Vice Mayor Blash adequately addressed the challenges of a super-small community. We can't just say, "This part of our public land doesn't work, but we have another piece of public land in town that's going to be really good for an encampment." We have a handful of little pieces of public property, and it's Klaus Circle, it's Doc Edgar Park, it's our parks downtown, which is basically one big campus. It's not very easy to accommodate that sort of request, which was what we were challenged with up until this summer. One of the things that we began to investigate specifically with county partners is a couple pieces of county-owned land that are within the town's jurisdiction. There was not an appetite to have that conversation, unfortunately. But again, you know, as a community discussion and as a group of people that are all trying to solve this, I would implore folks moving forward to continue to advocate, not just to us, but to our county partners that are taking the lead on these issues in the region, to our state assembly member, to our state senator, to our congressman, folks that actually have a real handle or a hand on the purse strings at different levels of government that are able to usher in resources that we can't just magically manifest at the local level, which has been one of the frustrating things, is trying to find good-faith partnerships, but nobody wants to take on the burden of, you know, having an encampment sited on their property. It's really, really challenging, especially with folks with so many varied needs. So, there are some folks that are a good fit for the congregate shelter. There are other folks who have taken a look at it that currently reside in Fairfax that have sent messages to us saying, "We took a look, not for us. This feels really dangerous. We feel much safer in this small, little encampment, and we're here just temporarily. We just need a little time." These are the sorts of challenges before us. But all of that brings us to these discussions here. You know, I think the sanctioned encampment option, which is something that San Rafael has been forced to do because they had said, "You can't be here. You can't be here. You can't be here." And each time they were taken to court, they had to expend a ton of money. This is true both for San Rafael and Nevada. It was also true when anchor outs were removed in Sol Solito, and then they had encampments there. You could take a look at all of these budgets for these different communities and just how challenged they have become financially, each of these communities, because of taking any action, trying to solve it. It's not like it's their fault, you know? They were trying to think creatively to solve the problem, but with each attempt, they were met with a new challenge, they were met with a new court order, a judge coming down on them at different times over the last five to six-plus years, different challenges, but hundreds and hundreds of thousands, millions of dollars across these communities, some of them, multiple of these communities having budget struggles amidst these legal challenges. So, this is something that I think the council and staff have been watching and have been trying to evaluate. How do we do this in a way that's not going to make us regret? Well, you know, it's, what's the least regret option, essentially? The sanctioned encampment is expensive. It's quite expensive, whether it's erecting the fencing, establishing where it would be, 24-hour security, managing the curfews, and then, you know, porta-potties and having all of these different services. Again, that San Rafael has to do that because of the legal issues that they've had. I think as Vice Mayor Blash and I were moving through different options, this option didn't seem like a really good fit for a community as small as Fairfax. The same is true for some of these other longer-term encampment resolution strategies. You know, is it possible to build shelter that's not congregate shelter, that some folks might like to have their own little room? Yeah, it's possible to do that, but what, under what timeframe and with what resources? And we could try to build those partnerships, but that doesn't get what the community, I think, ultimately wants, which is clarity on what is the timeline for resolving the encampment that we currently have behind the pavilion, back behind the ball field, and we've heard from different stakeholders, but especially West Marin Little League, you know, following the fall season, there's a spring season that'll pick up at the end of February, and they would like to have some assurances that-- of February, and they would like to have some assurances that this won't continue to be an issue. People want to know when this is going to be resolved. And I think that's what resulted in the discussion that we put forward in our most recent report, which is talking about concurrent timelines for establishing an anti-camping ordinance for town parks or public lands in the town of Fairfax. How, like, under what timeline do you have that? How do you give proper notice for the folks that are currently on a housing pathway? There are several people who are waiting for vouchers. What, like, how do you make sure that those folks don't get lost in the shuffle if they have to move somewhere else? And so when we're meeting with unhoused folks in the community, that's been a question leading up to tonight that's been posed to them, and that will be brought back up with them tomorrow. One said that they might show up tonight, but others didn't feel comfortable. But it was a question. Say we implemented an anti-camping ordinance, and under a certain timeframe, where would you go? What would your plan be? You should probably start to think about those sorts of things in the event that that happens, and getting their feedback, and, you know, what seemed like a reasonable timeline to them. But just trying to make sure that all stakeholders were at the table, thinking through their future, which is literally just their life. Some of them have relatives that own businesses here in town. Some of them have been elsewhere and have come back because they haven't felt safe in other parts of Marin where they were sleeping, and they felt safe in Fairfax, which I think is a testament to how great it has been as far as police checking in on folks, making sure they feel safe, et cetera, and Community Action Marin and others providing adequate resources week to week. But fundamentally, I think the recommendation was have a discussion about this anti-camping ordinance. I believe our town attorney has experience with these sorts of ordinances following the Supreme Court ruling and can maybe answer questions or speak to this. Again, talking about the timeframe or timeline where all of these things would happen. Of course, with any ordinance, there's the actual passing, the drafting and then the passing, but then there's the 30 days before it's implemented. How does this dovetail with making sure folks have offers to go to temporary housing? More vouchers are on the way as of January. More shelter beds are opening as the veteran housing that was recently open in Nevada is starting to accept more people, and they're moving out of temporary shelter bed housing into that permanent veteran housing for formerly homeless veterans in Marin. So there's, it's a good time to be discussing these things. They're obviously still different, moving pieces and parts, but I think there is a window here where we can have clarity around the resolution of the encampment in swift order, like, in the coming months, and simultaneously making sure that folks that are on a pathway to get a voucher are able to stick with that process. And we're able to coordinate with Paul and other service providers to offer these shelter beds that are turning up now that folks are moving into veteran housing, et cetera. So it's a really good opportunity right now to talk about that, you know, those final two bullets. And, you know, I welcome Vice Mayor Blash if there's any final stuff that I missed on that, or Gary, who's on the line, to speak as well. But I think it's, this is a really important opportunity for us to discuss and get clarity on the timeframe, because I think that, more than anything else, that's what the public wants to know, is this isn't just some sort of revolving door behind the pavilion that will be here indefinitely and is just the new abnormal of the housing crisis and the homelessness crisis in California. It's just, you know, what is the plan?
Did you want to add anything, Vice Mayor Blash? Because I kind of think we ought to have more discussion or questions.
No, I'm willing to let it go for now, and I'm not sure if we want to check in with Gary Nahar Reece, if he has anything to add to that.
Gary, are you on the line?
I am. That was a really great summary of all the things that are happening in the county currently, so nothing to add at this time.
Great. I would ask my fellow council members, okay.
I think we were going to have, Councilor, maybe we'll do questions first, but we were also going to have our town attorney go over some things. We want to do questions first or after she does that?
I'm not sure. I just think this has been an excellent presentation, but it's also been quite lengthy. And I know people are getting impatient. Town Attorney Colson, can you cover, I know there was an anti-camping ordinance in Pleasant Hill, which you also represent, and is that something you want to cover, those issues? Or how do you want to approach this?
Well, no, I, that, I am familiar with anti-camping ordinances, not just recently, actually, but I can recall when I first started my career, one of the very first things I ever did more than 30 years ago was draft an anti-camping ordinance, which looks very different from the ones today, obviously. We have a lot more guidance from the courts today. And so I do have a template of one that is as legally defensible as possible at this point in time. I want to emphasize that nothing is completely bulletproof, and it includes the latest decisional law. And so if you're interested in that, that is something I can provide as well. We've had Public Records Act requests about numbers of calls for service from...
Yeah, maybe you can cover what those are, because I know when you look at the call logs, it's a lot of stuff, and it's not very clear. And maybe what you can clarify for us is what that kind of means, ultimately, what it kind of boils down to.
So in the staff report on this presentation, on page two, there is, down near the bottom of page two, going into page three, I tried to summarize two and a half years' worth of calls for service, trying to give some perspective on what I see when I look at it, what the police department sees when they look at it, which may be very different from what the general public sees. The vast majority of calls are for noise or PC 415, which is Penal Code 415. These are basically the same thing, just a difference in degree, I think. Penal Code 415 is disturbing the peace. It's for loud arguments or loud parties, while a noise classification is frequently just music or loud voices, as opposed to voices arguing. It's, the police department, when I spoke with them, they noted that it's not unusual to find a noise or a sound to be coming from someplace other than the encampment. The call says it's coming from the encampment, but when they get there, it's actually coming from some other place. There are notations on this call log, things like unwanted, and you wonder, well, what is that? It's a report of an individual who was unwanted at a particular location. It's usually somebody in the encampment saying somebody else has approached the encampment and is unwanted. In two and a half years, there are four allegations of theft on this report. It's either between residents of the encampment or between members of the public and residents of the encampment. There were various items claimed to have been stolen. One was a phone, and one was a Bluetooth speaker, another one was a chair. That one, for the chair, a lawn chair, that was the only substantiated allegation, and that chair was returned. There was one individual who was not living at the encampment, was found to have an outstanding There was a lot of intoxication, I think, a fair amount of these calls, intoxication. One time, there was a 647F, which is intoxicated in public, also commonly referred to as drunk in public. Calls for alcohol or drugs, or reports of what callers are seeing, what they believe they're seeing. They believe they see someone drinking alcohol. They smell cannabis. Only one of the reports resulted in a person being cited for drinking alcohol in public. Reports of garbage, there are a few reports of garbage on here, and you wonder what that is, but it's throwing garbage oftentimes into the creek area. There are just a handful of those reports. Somebody saw something like that, that they thought they saw. All of these reports are checked out. Everything is, no report is ignored. There are, there's a couple of reports of vandal, just says vandal on it. That's a report of a stranger vandalizing the encampment or graffiti from an unknown source. There was an incident of paint on a tree. There's a report of a hazard, it just says hazard, in June of '23, and that was human waste on the ground, one report of that. Reports of fire are reports of individuals seeing a fire in the vicinity of the encampment, and the fire department is called on those. And they either found no fire, or they deemed what they did find to not be a hazard. There is only one report on September 20th of arson at the encampment, and I think Councilmember Cutrona spoke about that report. It was a resident of the encampment attempting to burn the encampment. There's one report of a battery. It's a fight between two individuals with alcohol being involved. A 415 DV in October of last year was determined to be a fight and not a domestic violence situation. A report of elder abuse, there's one report in there of elder abuse, and it's a report by an individual who is, was an adult who could not care for himself due to mental or psychological factors, reporting that his girlfriend was abusing him. The elder abuse title is used because the statute that applies to elder abuse also applies to abuse of individuals, adults, with mental or psychological disabilities that can't care for themselves properly. And then finally, I think one of the more severe reports was in late May, early June of this year, there are a number of notations related to a child abuse situation where a child was removed from an adult caring for that child or not caring for that child. It was due to neglect. And that's over a two-and-a-half-year period. So when I look at this and when I went through everything, line by line, you know, the vast majority of these calls are nuisance types of calls. And the seriousness of some of the things that I think people believe happened there just is not reflected in this call log.
Okay, thank you. And just to clarify, so I would just ask that people be quiet, is, we have a community policing model, so our police respond to everything. And if you were in another jurisdiction, for example, that has a consolidated police department, they don't respond to all those calls, they have a different model. And so that's why we do see a lot. I see Councilmember Hellman has a question.
Well, I'm, just for clarity, as far as what we're doing this evening, because I understood that we were going to talk about scope, potential scope of an ordinance and what would be included in that, and I thought the staff would might kind of walk us through some questions as far as what to consider. And I don't know if that's the Pleasant Hill model or San Rafael, but is that still the plan?
I wouldn't call it the Pleasant Hill model. What I did when Grants Pass came down was request, I was still with BBK, and I requested a template of an anti-camping ordinance be drawn up, because I thought that one of my clients would want it at some point in time. And the direction given was to make it as defensible, legally defensible as possible, include everything that we needed to have in there to make it hopefully withstand a challenge. And I think that what you can see is that things that are really important are due process. And so notice, if you're going to remove belongings from public property where people are camping, and there's a definition of camping, there's a definition of camping equipment or paraphernalia type of things, sleeping bags, tents, cookstoves, lanterns, that sort of thing. If you are going to take those belongings and you have somebody come in and remove all of those things, first off, you have to give notice, adequate notice, you have to post the notice, you have to make sure that the people who are there understand what's going to happen and when it's going to happen. So you have to give them enough time, several days usually, to pack everything up and to move, to take it with them if they want it. At the appointed time on the notice, you usually arrive with a crew who has been specially trained to deal with all sorts of things they may find at an encampment area, and that's not town staff, that's a hired crew. And they proceed to...
Janet, I just want to interrupt you. I think what Councilmember Hellman was asking is not the specifics of the notice. We understand that there's a lot involved in that sort of situation. But I think what she's asking for is, aren't we looking for, what are the elements that would be included in the anti-camping ordinance? I realize that's one piece of it, but I think there's things like, would you preclude people from camping on every public property? Or would you preclude people from...
I thought we were going to have, like, a discussion list, because if we give you direction tonight, yes, we want to know camping, you need specific direction, right?
Actually, I'm sorry, go ahead.
So what, the subcommittee had a recommendation, which is to that, to that end, to go in that direction. We're just two people, so we have to have the discussion here whether or not the full council wants to pursue an anti-camping ordinance. Then we can have this conversation now about what's in it, and Janet would bring back a draft anti-camping ordinance for the council to review and possibly edit and possibly vote on at a forthcoming meeting. But that's, so I think the first step would be to say, does everybody want to do that ordinance? And then the second step would be, what do we want to make sure is in that ordinance?
Okay, well, I think that makes sense. So let's do, I feel like if there's any more questions of staff, I would like to move this to public comment, because I know folks have been impatient and milling about, okay, can you make it sort of quick so we can move to public comment?
Really very much appreciate the work that the subcommittee has done and that Janet has reported on. It's really good to have all this before us. So I just wanted to sort of test out my very top-level understanding of what we might have in mind here. From what I heard from your subcommittee report, with the timeline and all of the vast amount of work that you put into it and experience that here in Fairfax and elsewhere, what I heard you describing was that over time, we now are in a point where it might be possible to actually succeed in clearing the encampment and finding places for these people who are in it, because there's, the legal lines are lined up right now, and there might actually even be some vouchers coming available because of some of the veteran housing opening and so forth. So if I heard that correctly, then what I'm thinking, and I'm just asking, what it might mean to have an anti-camping ordinance would be that we say, no one else can move in there, that you can't go back there and camp.
Okay, excuse me, please be quiet.
Asking a question, if you don't mind. I'd like to understand it, and maybe other people would like to understand it. If I'm the only person that doesn't, just explain it to me, and I'll just stop.
Sure, I can clarify. So the sanctioned encampment option, which is what San Rafael is doing and what Binford Road with all of those mobile homes by the wetlands...
That's where you find a spot and you say...
Yeah, it's, or like, that spot is already there, and you say, gosh, we need to resolve this, perhaps we can get, if it's big enough, they're able to get state funding to help with the resolution of the encampment. But in order to even do that, and Gary could speak to this too, let's say Binford Road, they're, let's say they're 38 mobile home, or mobile whatever, in tents, they say, boom, this is an official encampment, and with that, we will provide X, Y, and Z, but no more people can be at this encampment, and we will actually make... more people can be at this encampment, and we will actually make sure that there are no more people. And there are 38 people, or 38 whatever, and then we will slowly decrease that and get people case management, get people on a housing pathway, get them their driver's license, or, you know, state ID, or help reconnect them with family. And over time, they use all of those resources to resolve the encampment. And they establish like, at this point in time, this is the number of people, and it will be no more, and we will take this number down to zero, and that is the resolution of the encampment. That is what you are, what you were saying is like, you basically say, this is the encampment, no more people, and it's in this particular area. I think one of the challenges that we've heard about is you can say, this is the, this is an official encampment, and there can be no more people, there are five people, that's it, or whatever it is. But if another one appears somewhere else, there, you run into new challenges of how do you respond to a new encampment appearing? So the, the recommendation that we were looking at is the anti-camping ordinance, which is, there's a date certain when folks have to have a plan. It's, you can't, you don't have to go to a particular place, you just can't stay here. And by here, we mean public property in Fairfax. And it's even more important to be considering these things as other communities start evaluating whether or not they will institute anti-camping ordinances, which start pushing people into different communities. So for us to say, not just, like, there are a certain number of people here, we're saying there can be no people on public property sleeping.
Yeah.
And, but trying to connect that with the, the service provisions and making sure that we're working in lockstep with service providers to get some folks into the temporary shelters, and then a couple of the other folks, there is a possibility that they'll have a voucher available for them.
Yep. So it's working on both ends, essentially. It's saying that we would have an anti-camping ordinance that, no camping ordinance that would say that at that place or any other place in town on, that you can't come and camp. That's it. We're enforcing that now. And at the same time, those people who are there now continue to work to get them out.
Insofar as...
What am I missing?
In, yeah, insofar as we have to, we would, if we all wanted to do something like this, we would have to bring, bring back a draft ordinance, approve that ordinance at a, possibly a special meeting, and then a second reading at a regular meeting, and then it takes 30 days for that ordinance to go into effect. And then you would need to have, like, so there's a, it's kind of like the last item that we all talked about. There's a, there are timelines associated with these things, especially given the due process considerations under the U.S. Constitution and the legality of all of these things. So in order to do it, you would need to have a certain amount of time. But if you said, it goes into effect on this day, then we provide notice to people and they have to be out by this date.
Okay, so the, then the process of trying to find shelter for those people, or trying to find a place for those people that are there to go is concurrent with the process of the ordinance being developed and eventually going into effect.
Correct, yes. Thank you for clarif, I think that's a very clear way of putting it.
I think one thing to point out is, you might have not have a place for people to go. And I think one thing to remember is under the last Trump administration, they even ratcheted down back more on HUD money. There is very little HUD money, always, under any administration, and there's very few vouchers. So there, there's not going to be magic, as Council Member Cottrell talks about. And I think the other thing to point out is Mahone Pass, with their permanent encampment, had 70 people, there is room for 47 people. I don't know where those 23 people go. And they have three years to get them out, be done with it. And their most current expenditure is 2.9 million grand, but they spent, I think, about nine million. I know their city manager pretty well. And it, it's a different situation than what we have here, which I just want to reiterate, we're not looking at these kind of funds. And even if you were to do a sanctioned encampment here, I know there was a figure thrown out of $185,000. I think it would be much higher than that, millions, and it would continue on. And also, when you create a sanctioned encampment, more people come, because there's more places. But let's go to public comment now, and I want to remind folks that we have two minutes each. And I also want to remind you that if you agree with the person or persons before you, because I think there's a lot of folks here that want to speak on this, it's okay to say, I agree with the previous speaker. And so with that, I will open it up to public comment. I believe the first speaker is Todd Greenberg.
Good evening, Todd Greenberg, downtown Fairfax, suffering from the festering nightmare that this has become. So disappointed in all of you for having not taken action until all of us staged a protest to draw your attention and the media's attention to this. No action. I was so disappointed to hear the comment from one of the council members, attributed to one of the council members, that was, you want to help the homeless? Help us build more housing, more affordable housing that costs a lot of money here, a million dollars per door. Some of us think that you're using the homeless there as an excuse to build housing based upon that comment. Some of us think, rightly so, that that creek has been polluted because of your non-action. You know, a future councilperson here and a past councilperson here, along with a lot of other people here, just helped clean that up dramatically. I don't think you're doing enough. I think that there's some translation error from the attorney who just seemingly is reading a report and doesn't seem to understand that there's been needles. I've called in and been with Detective Jones, who picked up needles in close proximity to that camp. There's been multiple ODs, overdoses, in our community. There's pictures of people with glass pipes and reports of meth-smoking smells in that encampment. There's been kids attacked by machetes. There's been kids groped in the crotch.
Next speaker, please. You know, please, folks, let's get through this. We don't need extra. Thank you, Sean, please.
Sean Fitzgerald-Spruce. Janet, that's a gross, gross mischaracterization of small activity. The, the violence and screaming from there next to children is, is like close to insanity. You can hear it nearly a quarter mile away. Also a reminder that the crimes of that encampment are not always reported to and attributed to the encampment. They frequently end up in downtown, where one nearly killed herself in a bar and stabbed a citizen. They end up pooping on walls, as reported by a firefighter in town. It's, it's out in the town. Rico, the police chief, has said it'd be nearly impossible to, to attribute all the crime to an encampment. So there's a lot more than was listed on your call log. I do want to commend the council for having this conversation tonight. Thank you, Bruce and Stephanie and Liesl and Chance for voting to, to talk about this tonight. I do commend that. But it's gotten untenable. There's so much conflict in this camp, and it could have been resolved right after that fire, and you did the right thing closing the camp. But that should have been the defining moment, the turning moment in, in our time to put a stop to it. Because since then, four new residents moved in within the last six months from Sausalito. They're not from here, one from Ohio, another one from Iowa, I believe. We only have two that are in that camp that were related to Fairfax. And had we closed it down and tried to give those the services, we could have resolved this already. I do want to draw attention to Liesl, the approach of housing first, and that only works if people want housing. And I've been in that camp nearly every single day, and they do not want to be indoors. And the question is, what do you do with folks that do not want to go indoors? And we have folks there that don't want a housing voucher, they don't want to be inside. We got to solve that.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, Town Council. My name is Isabel Landis. I am 18 years old, and I grew up in Fairfax. I am here today to speak to you about the homeless encampment that you are all very well aware of. I do not wish to complain about their encampment in general, but I specifically want to talk about the substance abuse that takes place in their circle. I have seen firsthand how neglect as it pertains to substance abuse can ruin lives and tear people apart. I have also seen how treatment and rehabilitation can be the difference between life and death. I have experienced both of these outcomes. My grandma and my dad have struggled with substance abuse for their entire lives. The difference between the two is that one is dead and one is alive and thriving. My grandma lived in conditions where her drug abuse was ignored. She felt so alone, so ignored, that she felt she only had one option left. Her battle and her story ended in suicide. She jumped from a second-story balcony on Fourth Street, her body so mangled, the only thing left to be identified was her broken hands. My dad has been close to death as well, nearly surrendering to the same fate as my grandma. He has battled alcoholism and struggled with drug abuse since he was 19. My dad today is doing extremely well, thanks to the people who were there for him and made sure that he did not die from his addictions. They made sure that he got sober. I could not be more grateful to the people that helped my dad reach the level of sobriety and stability he has today. I urge you to help the people that live in this encampment, help them live a life like my dad's. Please do not let these people end up like my grandma. Help these people, use your resources and use your funding. If not for the citizens of this town or the children who play on the baseball field, do it for them. It is inhumane to permit them to live under the conditions that you are allowing. And please do not tell us that your hands are tied. The only thing your hand should be tied to is a pen and a piece of paper, so you can write the ordinance with the help of community oversight. This is far overdue. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, next speaker, please.
Thank you, Council. I would also like to commend Todd, I thought he brought up a lot of good points. I'd also like to thank Stephanie and Bruce and Liesl and Chance for bringing forth this discussion tonight. Barbara, you were in opposition to it.
I haven't voiced any opposition.
You were in opposition to it. Okay, you argued at the other meeting.
I'm mayor who helps set the agenda, and I help put the...
You improperly tried to bring forth motion as, as placed, and Chance brought it to save us.
Go ahead, please.
Okay, so please quit interrupting. Okay, you just can't take time. But the reason I'm up here is we've been discussing this, trying to discuss this for three years. Todd was correct that we finally made enough noise that you guys paid attention. Sean's been up there every single day. He can tell you some of these stories, but this council has not. I sent a letter in response to Liesl, which was again misrepresented tonight, and I put it on Next Door. When I specifically asked those camp, campers if they had met with our subcommittee, nobody had met or seen Chance. Sorry, Chance, for throwing you under the bus, and you're always extremely polite, but this is important. When I asked everybody about Liesl, one person, actually an anchor out, said he had met her, but on the rare occasion, so he couldn't remember who it was. This is a failure of this council. This has been brought forth by the community so many times, saying like, hey, we need a resolution. A resolution is not to establish a camp that then you guys can interpret to accept the, the just cause and rental laws. This is a request by the community to look for an outcome that's both humane for the campers, but also protects our children. You've allowed them to go next to Little League field of all the people you guys should be up here protecting? You're failing the most important class. I mean, this would be something that I would feel actually really bad if it's myself. I think you have failed the community. You have an opportunity right now to say, we need an ordinance, and make those points clear, so the community can get behind you and get it done. But the community wants to be a part at the table. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Pamela Meggs, Fairfax. I've been hearing a lot from people I know, neighbors, about the homeless. My son, my grandson moved in with me. Then I started hearing that kids' programs at the pavilion had to be canceled because the homeless were camping on the porch. Then I said, you know what, I'm going to go down there. So I went down there. Pleasant experience with the campers, but they're smoking cigarettes. And the garbage next to the skate park was unbelievable. By the way, garbage brings rats and raccoons that have rabies. So I don't know what y'all thinking, but this is health. And, and so when, when I see that, it's, town is not being taken care of. The other thing that happened is, I was at the laundromat, and I got threatened by a couple of homeless who were, had gazillion plugins in the wall. I called the police department, I, no offense. But it was kind of like, well, what do you want us to do? And it's true, what are you going to do? And it keeps being dropped. And it's very sad, and I really appreciate your data tonight, because there were some things that I didn't actually know, it was very helpful. But there's no action. The, you know, maybe we could actually do something with another community, share costs, that's what I'm hearing in the Bay Area. So I don't know, but all I know is that boundaries are good, and please create some boundaries. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Town Council, my name is Alex Coons. I'm the president of West Marin Little League. My children are eight, 11, and 13. They used to play at Perry Park. Now we use Central Field frequently. West Marin Little League has already shared its concerns to you, the council, in writing on October 16th, and I cannot stress enough the urgency of these concerns for the safety of our players, our wider community, and our request for the council to enforce its existing laws and move the encampment away from Central Field and Perry Park. I wonder, how will I explain to our community and children that the local dispensary, seemingly beloved by the community, must seek a complex permission to operate within 300 feet of a daycare and a tutoring center? Yet we have a growing encampment with open drug use just feet away from a children's baseball field in Perry Park. Central Field and West Marin host 400 children ages five to 12, seven days a week during the spring, summer, and we have a fall season. We've had too many disturbances, as you know, due to this close proximity of the encampment to our children's facility, resulting in calls to the police, and worst of all, terrified children on the baseball field, some of whom you've heard from at the last meeting, and threats to the safety of our players and families. We are very sensitive to the challenges that many face in communities across California, including those who reside in the encampment. But surely this has reached a crisis point. Surely the status quo cannot continue. The children in our community need the encampment moved away from these children's facilities before something terrible and avoidable happens. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker. Next speaker, please.
Good evening. My name is Anna Barker. I live on Willow. This is my first town council meeting to attend. My current position is, I run an after-school program in our local public schools here in Fairfax and San Anselmo. We serve about 400 kids. And my family moved here to Fairfax about 11 years ago from a community that did not really have a lot of kids that were outside playing. We chose Fairfax specifically because of the freedom that we saw children having in this community. We initially rented, then we bought in the community specifically for that reason. My daughters are 18 and 24 years old. When they were growing up, they had free range of this town, which was one of our favorite things about choosing Fairfax. I wouldn't let my children now, if they were younger, have free range in Fairfax. One thing that I know and I can say with certainty is there are not enough activities for our kids. Out in the public sector, there's nothing out there, they don't have access to this park. We just heard from West Marin Little League, their, their ability to have their players and their families playing out at, at the ballpark is, is very compromised right now. My request to you, to the Town Council, as someone who works directly with children, is to put them first and foremost in this situation. They should have the utmost consideration of all of the adults in this space, and their free, their safety and their freedom to be able to move around in our town without being or feeling threatened, should be the first and foremost consideration on everybody's mind here. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Mallory Gudheim, Willow Avenue. You were talking about there being a challenge from Grants Pass. Well, I think you guys... Well, I think you guys should sit up and take the challenge instead of just rolling over because somebody says something that it's too hard for you to do. And I'm just so tired of you guys not fighting for the people of this town. And yet you're fighting for the people who are homeless. I understand that they need empathy and services, but our town needs empathy and services as well. So I think it would be really nice if you made that a priority. And you were talking about an option that can drop millions of dollars on lawsuits. Well, we've been dropping that on consultants. How about doing it for the town and having these things getting taken care of for the people of the town? I just want to know if you guys are going to take the challenge or to just do what you're supposed to be thinking that you're to be nice to the people who are homeless and not to the people who have kids here, who have animals who can't walk anymore because it's being taken over and we need to take it back. Make camping illegal. And I had, yes, make camping illegal. This is from Lynette through Todd. There was a homeless person who was arrested for theft of $200.
Next speaker, please.
$200. I'm finished my goddamn sentence.
I'm sorry, Mallory.
No, I'm sorry. I want to finish.
Deplinton. Next speaker, please.
Janet, I think that's, you should not waste our time reciting milquetoast nuisance nonsense. There's too much talk and no action. It was laughable when we did our little march through town and all of a sudden there was a flurry of email about homelessness. And where were your reports about the insane girl with the knife stabbing people in Naves and the Roastery? And what about the crazy guy screaming expletives at our customers? Or the San Quentin guy who had recently been released? Or the guy in my closet? Chance, you talked about homeless people moving back to Fairfax because they felt safe. Isn't that nice? But I don't give a damn if they feel safe because we don't. Our kids don't feel safe. Our family and friends and neighbors don't feel safe. Our businesses certainly don't feel safe when we have to deal with that kind of stuff. But, okay, blah, 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 okay. Yeah, taking showers in our bathroom. And I just, what else was I gonna say? I don't know. I lost my place. Anyway, no camping. I believe, I support Todd, what he said. It's very, very true. And Michael Mack, I support what you said. You were never up there. None of those homeless people ever saw you before in their lives. You're not interacting with them. And these people have severe problems and they're criminals, and they need to go. And if we're so small a town that we don't have enough public lands, then guess what? We don't have a homeless encampment. They just can't be here. That's what I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please, Mr. Agar.
Frank Agar from the Cascades. Ordinance number 746 passed in 2009 makes it unlawful to be in the park after dark without permission of the town clerk. At the last meeting where this was discussed, I asked the question, has the town clerk granted permits? There was no answer. The town is attempting to formulate a process to legalize urban encampments when the town code does not allow it without a permit from the town clerk. If Fairfax is running an urban encampment in our town's children's park, have you run a Megan's Law check on the campers for protection of our children? The pavilion, our local gym and recreation facility that's almost 100 years old, is at risk if fires are allowed in a close proximity. Fairfax Creek has a serious erosion and landslide issue below the encampment, putting any campers at risk. Winter rains are coming and increased creek flows are upon us. The liability is huge. If Fairfax would have immediately enforced its town codes when the first tent showed up, we would not be in this position. Who in the town ordered, hands off? I don't know. These are not Fairfax residents who have lost their housing. Fairfax is too small to take other communities' overflow of campers. An encampment was set up recently in Ross, like this past weekend, by the post office down there. It lasted one day. You've allowed this to run three years and put our children at risk. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Next speaker, please, Mr. Bell.
Mark Bell, Fairfax. You know, a lot of money's being thrown around on this issue. And when the guy made the presentation a few months ago, reminded me of the war on poverty, which basically just created a huge bureaucracy. And there was some trickle-down money to people who really needed it. I'm not seeing the money that's being spent being spent wisely. It's not just something you just hire all these people for, but then you just get a trickle-down effect. The other thing I want to bring up is, you know, yes, we need to be compassionate to people, but where's the reciprocity? They're not thinking about us. They're not looking at the town going, wow, this is really, these people are really nice here in Fairfax. Let's do something for the town for letting us be here for three years. That's not happening. Regardless of whether you're on drugs or not, you can still be nice. You can still give back, especially when you're being given a free lunch. And the other thing as far as legally defensible, it kind of made me chuckle when I heard that. I remember that the, there was like this totally legally defensible position to keep smart meters out of Fairfax, where the legal bill was an extra $150,000 that year. That didn't seem to work. We have a tree ordinance, supposedly legally defensible. They cut down all kinds of trees with nothing, even trees that had nothing, not even close to wires. So when I hear that this attorney say that she's gonna draft something legally defensible, maybe we should find an attorney who actually can.
Next speaker, please.
I'm Dylan Osborne. I'm 16 years old, and I've been living in Fairfax all my life. And I wanted to share my experience that I've experienced with the homeless here. I used to go up to the ballpark to hang out with friends, and I had a homeless lady approach me and lift up my shirt. And I walked away to get away from the situation, went to the bus stop with my friends. And she came back and followed me and then went to go touch a little boy that was 10 times younger than my age. And the father had to step in and push her away. And then the police were able to come and assort the situation. But I've been harassed by homeless people multiple times since I've been living here. Since around the past year, I've had homeless people approach me down by Perry Park, coming up, trying to touch me and talk to me. And I'd have to walk away from the situation multiple times. So that's just what I wanted to share, that I've been harassed many times by the homeless people here. And I honestly don't feel safe walking around town by myself anymore.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. So I don't see any more speakers in the room. Mark, would you mind turning the button off? Anybody who's good at turning that button off. Are there speakers on Zoom?
There are several speakers on Zoom.
Okay, let's go ahead.
The first speaker is Lynn, followed by Kristen. Lynn, you are unmuted.
Thank you. Hi. I agree with everybody said that spoke. But I just, since I agree with that, I won't go over it. But I want to make it clear, I don't think you guys really understand what a call log is. I talked to Lieutenant K about the incident we had on the wall property, and they do not log every single call. If I call, they log it as one call if it's about the same situation. So up there in the neighborhood, we had more than 25 calls. And we knew it because we all checked our AT&amp;T phone logs. But when you try to get that number out of Fairfax, they don't have it. They say there were three calls. There were not three calls. So I heard what was said earlier about how many people called in. The only way you're really gonna get that true number is if the town of Fairfax, the police department, actually look at AT&amp;T or Comcast or whoever is their phone company and actually see how many calls came in from how many numbers. So that's a gray area. When you say like, three people only complained about the wall property party that was up there, it wasn't true. And we all knew it because we all compared our phone logs. So keep that in mind when you're being told there, you know, that rundown of how many calls were made. It's highly unlikely that it's a true number. And it makes you wonder if there actually was a crime there. How could they trace it? How many calls? Who saw a car? Who saw what? Who saw somebody walking around with a knife? Who knows? Because they're not putting it in the call log. And that's all I have to say. It's a big missed piece of the puzzle.
Thank you, Lynn. Next speaker, please.
The next speaker is Kristen, followed by Kay. Kristen, you are unmuted.
We could go to the next speaker and maybe Kristen can come back.
Kristen, you have to unmute yourself. There you go.
Hello, my name is Ashley Kirsten, Kirsten Asher. And thanks for having me on tonight. What I'm hearing from the presentation tonight is from these few town council members that you have focused so much for so long, for many years, and done a deep dive on the bureaucracy around how to help the homeless. What I'm hearing is that, it's your term, that the homeless are stakeholders. What I'm not hearing is that the citizens are also stakeholders, that the citizens have rights too. There's a, someone said this tonight, and people aren't furniture to move. You know, citizens aren't guinea pigs. Citizens aren't guinea pigs to violence in their parks, meth, drugs, kids being harassed, touched, fires being started, hatchets coming out, there was a death in the camp. How you have gone this long, this length of time, without acknowledging the citizens and the true danger that we have been dealing with, the kiddie park we cannot use? It's unconscionable. The fact that you have waited this long to hear the people. I want a no camping ordinance to be made. And Frank was absolutely right. There's already an ordinance on the book, 746, that doesn't allow camping in the park. I don't know who's not following the ordinances in this town, but you guys really need to listen to your people, A, to address dangerous situations in our town with the utmost, you know, with a tremendous amount of response and to follow laws in our town. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
The next speaker is Kay, followed by Sierra. Kay, you are unmuted.
Hi again. I just, really quick, want to thank you so much for addressing this. I want to thank the young, the brave young women that came and spoke up tonight, especially the heartfelt comment about addiction. You're a beautiful, awesome human being. We need more like you. The worst thing you can do is ignore people in crisis. We keep talking about compassion and empathy, but we haven't even provided them with a bathroom. Expecting the unhoused to go into the police station to use a bathroom shows how out of touch you are with this community and actually lack of compassion. I would love to see the town council make a commitment to put as much energy and time and money into human beings as you did for the open space for the wall property. And Barbara, directed towards you, I really do understand you're really trying to get through this meeting and trying to be productive and all that. But it really comes off that people who want to speak or are speaking besides the town council members, that we're a burden or we're bothering you. And it's very discouraging. And I think we need to change that tone a little bit so we can actually encourage public participation. And thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
The next speaker is Sierra, followed by Nancy. Sierra, you are unmuted.
You know, I agree with pretty much everyone, and I'm glad for the dialogue. It's already been said for the most part. But what I did want to respond to and talk about and say is it's like, you know, relax, respect the public, respect the speakers, allow us to speak. This is mostly directed to you, Barbara. Forgive me. I really like having you on the council. I really appreciate your viewpoints and contributions. But I really feel like swearing right now. Your demeanor and your delivery towards the public, especially people that might be going over or that you might disagree with, is really crabby. You cut us off, and it's distracting, and it kind of ruins our train of thought. It's like, can you get some help with that, please? It really wrecks the meeting and it puts a dent in the community. This is our community, and you were crabbing at us and shutting us down. We're here because we care. We're here because we love this community and we work with it. And you're not helping it. You're not helping me. And I know I'm not alone in that. Just allow us to speak, you know? Anyway, that's it.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
The next speaker is Nancy, followed by Cindy. Nancy, you are unmuted.
Okay, here I am. Thank you. I just wanted to call in, and I'm so appreciative of some of the clarity I got this evening about what has been done. And I also appreciate the speakers in the room, particularly the young women. I feel like this is the most productive conversation I've heard in a while about the situation. And as you know, I'm the one that started the petition three years ago on this matter because I could see the problematic nature of it. And I, I like, I like everybody. I care about those people up there. But I know I'm unequipped to deal with their issues. But on my own, at least. But one of the issues I have is the land around them that they're using. I'm hoping that we find a way to really replenish it. It's particularly the tree that I've really had a great affection for. It's been getting, you know, having nails put into it. And just, you know, the land around it's been really trashed. So I'm hoping some restoration and protections around the trees in that area will happen. So anyway, I appreciate being able to speak tonight. And I don't want to take up a lot of time, but thank you for offering this to the public. I really appreciate it. And thank everyone for speaking out.
Thank you, Nancy. Next speaker, please.
The next speaker is Cindy. Cindy, you are unmuted.
Hi, this is Cindy Ross, longtime Fairfax resident. And I wanted to say that I agree with almost everything that everybody else has said before. And I have a question, though, and maybe it's rhetorical, but I really would kind of appreciate an answer to it because it's really mind-boggling to me. I've heard a lot of con... I, I've heard a lot of concern before expressed about litigation and lawsuits and what the town can and can't do because of fear of being sued. And I, it, I just really don't understand it. You know, if, if we're talking about people that are homeless, that need resources, that don't have money, you know, that can't afford to live somewhere, that can't afford to get psychological help or medical assistance or, or don't have jobs, where's all this money coming from for lawsuits? Why are lawyers getting paid? Why, why, where's all this money coming from to discuss this for, for three years or whatever it is? It, it, it just seems like it's a tremendous, tremendous waste of, of resources. And frankly, it's, it's an insult to the people who live here in Fairfax, who've been paying taxes here in Fairfax, who, you know, of course, we're compassionate and we care about people, but, but as other people have said, it's time to start considering those of us who actually live here, who pay taxes here, who are involved with the community and who want to be able to walk to a park or to go downtown and not have to deal with being afraid to, to just take, to utilize our own resources. You're supposed to be taking care of us prior to, to people that are just deciding to set up, you know, in our, in our public spaces. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
There are no more speakers on Zoom.
Okay, bringing it back to the council. I think we're, you know, I don't know where we want to go with this. Is to go into, I, I think the first question that the subcommittee asked is, does the council want to see an anti-camping ordinance? That's the first question. As far as the details of such anti-camping ordinance, that might be difficult to accomplish all those details tonight. And I just want to say, before we do that, we're past the 10 o'clock rule. So I would ask somebody to make a motion.
I'm happy to make a motion away the 10 o'clock rule.
All right. So that was Councilmember Cutrano and second Vice Mayor Blash. Could you do a roll call vote on that, please?
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Ackerman.
Rassong.
Councilmember Hellman. Councilmember Cutrano.
Yep.
Vice Mayor Blash.
Yes.
Mayor Kohler.
Yes. So I think I, you know, I, I know there's a lot to sort of digest, but I think I would ask each of the council members to first answer the question, do you want an anti-camping ordinance? And without a bunch of other discussion, yes or no? And then if that's the case, then we can delve into some of those details. I don't know that we can cover every detail tonight, but, so could we start down at the end? Councilmember Ackerman.
Yes, I think we should ask staff to develop an anti-camping ordinance. And I think further that if we need to talk about any details, maybe it could be just any questions that our legal counsel has for us. Since you've already developed sort of a template for that, you probably have a better idea than I do certainly as to what the decision points would be.
I think that's a great idea. First, Councilmember Hellman, just sorry.
Yeah, I know you wanted to keep it to a yes or no. Definitely yes. And I, I would like our partners or social services to engage right away and give them the heads up. I know formal notice is required, but if we are unanimous or majority this evening, the sooner we can engage and let them know that this is on the horizon. I also have more questions and comments about the current ordinance and the scope of the ordinance, but yes.
Okay, thank you. And then I would go to Councilmember Cutrano.
Yep. And I think the most critical thing, I mean, there, there are parts of the ordinance that are worth getting into, but it's also going to be important to talk about, like, what is the official timeline for resolution of the encampment that we're envisioning? I think that'd be helpful for the council tonight, but also for the public to have a sense of, of that from the council.
Okay, yeah.
Okay. And I have to say, I know I asked for yes or no, but I'm pretty torn on this. I'm sorry, what? Oh, she said yes. So I'm a little torn on this. I know it can cause displacement of people to just other locations, which is kind of what happened when we moved the past one. It's also, you know, I know there's been a lot of talk about folks, you know, that live here and we're not considering them or the children. I also think these folks are human beings. So, I mean, I will vote a qualified yes, because I'd like, I think the devil's in the details.
Yes.
And I think to the extent feasible, and we can get to your questions, Councilmember Hellman. I do think Councilmember Ackerman's, and as far as the timeline, yes. Councilmember Ackerman's idea of just kind of throwing out, ticking off, kind of key components of what that ordinance would look like, would be the way to go. Because I don't think we can really delve into every detail, but maybe just ticking off kind of the key components. And with that, I'll turn it to Councilmember Hellman, who had a few more questions. And sorry, folks, my mic is dead, so we're sharing.
Yeah. And I know one of the members, the unhoused members of that encampment, I know his sister, and I'm happy to have a conversation with how, I just think more communication, the better. And Councilmember Cutrano, I don't have an answer to your question, but I am sensitive to the spring, early spring season, which I think was communicated was in February. So if we can keep our eye on that desired timeline. I also want to just highlight that every year for the Fairfax Festival, for the past several years, the encampment has been vacated voluntarily. I don't know exactly the interworkings of how that has happened, but the, the concerts, there's bands playing up there and the, and the folks living there don't stay there for the weekend. So, and they, they know about this and they do it voluntarily. And I don't know if staff gets involved in that, or is it community members that get involved with that? But I think they do, they, they can be resourceful and they can find alternative places. We know that there's 17 people at least living in our community right now, so.
And just to clarify, the 17 people are not in the small encampment. There's been areas, I live in the West area, and there are many folks that have been out there for years. And I don't know if it's the same folks. I know a few of them. But I would just say, I like the idea of having our town attorney tick off kind of what components of an anti-camping ordinance would look like. And then let's get feedback if you want to at least see that with options. Because I think we could do this to about 5:00 in the morning.
I was, I was kind of suggesting that, that our town attorney ask us any questions that she might need to ask us. I'm not, I don't necessarily need for myself to see what, get a preview of what the, the ordinance looks like, because we'll see that next month. But the question is, is what does she need in order to craft the, the ordinance we want? So do you have any questions for us?
And we'll see it sooner than next month. We have a special meeting.
Would be, yeah, that would be good.
And then, I mean, are there parameters, like, you mentioned a couple of days. To me, that doesn't sound like enough. I mean, I would prefer it be weeks. And offering temporary storage. And Lisa, you mentioned a service that may be pricey, but I don't know what those options are. I, I do think we should store their, we should offer storing their items for a certain amount of time.
We have to.
You have to.
Legally, we have to, yeah.
Yeah. What is the, what, what law is that?
It's decisional law. It's court, court cases.
Okay. And what are the, I'm just curious, what are the requirements of storage?
So.
Could we have some quiet in the, with the public?
Thank you.
You're free to walk outside and, and talk.
So the first thing I want to address is Mr. Egger brought up Chapter 12.36. And this is not being in the park after dark, basically. I would consider this to be wholly inadequate to try to enforce against an encampment. I would not recommend using that at all. Because in recent years, via court cases, we have learned some of the parameters that will make an ordinance more legally defensible than not. And notice, due process is one of the major requirements. So in an ordinance, I would put specific requirements for noticing when you're going to go in and take people's belongings out of an encampment, when you're going to go in and quote unquote, "clean up" an encampment pursuant to an anti-camping ordinance. You want to define the property. I recommend it be all public property. You want to define what camping means and what camping equipment means. So you have all these definitions. You want to make sure that you provide the notice and it's done in appropriate ways. And I think a minimum of three days is, is really as quickly as you can post notice and then bring in the crew specially trained to clean up the encampment, to take the belongings. It is commonly referred to as bagging and tagging, unfortunately, but that's what it's called. People recognize that. And what that means is that the crew takes belongings from a particular area, they, they bag it all together, things that are deemed to be, you know, not food wrappers, not rotting food or food that can rot, things that are, are people's possessions. And that includes photographs and papers, any kind of, of, you know, letters even, things of that nature. All of that is taken. It's bagged, it's tagged as to where it was found in the encampment. And it is taken and put in a storage area. And that storage area, you have to also leave notice as to when people can come and retrieve their belongings, the hours, the days, and who they contact, where they go to.
Does it need to be in the same jurisdiction?
Yes, you need to keep it in, in your jurisdiction because it needs to be readily accessible to them. So for example, when we did clean from the fire.
Yeah.
We rented a storage container. We hired a crew, they cleaned it out, they bagged it, they tagged it, they put it in the storage container. And I believe that there were people who came and retrieved belongings from there after a certain amount of time. And you also need to notice how much time that's going to be. If it's not retrieved, it is discarded. And so those parameters of that notice, that due process, all of that is, is required, and I would put that in an ordinance. One of the major things that I think people do have some discussion about is what's the penalty? And from my perspective.
For noncompliance, for, for camping?
Right. Do you go in and do you issue citations? Or do you go in and you take belongings and clean the encampment up? I don't think citations are really effective. I think that you have to, when you, when you take the belongings and people have to go to some lengths to retrieve them, and you keep on that and you keep doing that, I think that is a much more effective enforcement mechanism than issuing somebody a monetary penalty. I do not recommend that this be classified as a misdemeanor. It could be an administrative citation, it could be an infraction. That's all monetary penalties. Misdemeanor means you could lose your liberty, you could go to jail. And it also entitles you to a jury trial. And so I would not charge a misdemeanor for camping. I would instead recommend that you take the belongings.
Has that been the trend, like, post-Supreme Court ruling? Has that been, have there been, across the state, more no camping ordinances? And has that been the?
Certainly since Grant, since Grant's past decision for the U.S. Supreme Court, there have been more anti-camping ordinances enacted, some that were sitting on the books not enforced. Have, have, you know, there's been more enforcement. Because that case basically told us, it took us out of this limbo period where if we didn't have adequate shelter beds, we couldn't make people move, under the theory that it's the Boise case, the Martinvee Boise case. You have to be somewhere, so you might as well be here or, you know, as there, it doesn't really matter. But if you want somebody to not be here, you have to give them some other place where they can be, tell them where they can go. And that is a shelter bed. But if there aren't adequate shelter beds, then you can't tell them they can't be here. Grant's past case said to us, no, it's not a violation of the U.S. Constitution Eighth Amendment to the cruel and unusual punishment laws to say that you can't sleep here in the park overnight, you can't be here. And we don't have another place for you to be, but you just can't be here. That is not cruel and unusual punishment. Now, left a lot of questions unanswered. There are other ways of attacking anti-camping ordinances, but for our, for our purposes, I think, I don't think it's really effective to use citations. I think it's much more effective to take people's belongings, keeping them safe, bagging them up, putting them in a safe place, and allowing them to come retrieve them. If they go back to the encampment, you do it again. You notice and you take again. I think that is an effective deterrent. I think that, that teaches people it's, excuse me, there is a hassle factor there. And so they go find some other place to be. Now, I will tell you that there's also unintended consequences. You didn't want them here, but they've chosen some other place to be. Maybe that's worse, I don't know. But that's, you know, maybe it's more visible, maybe it's, it's more intrusive. But that's the unintended consequences of saying you can't be here. So I can certainly bring that to you. It's pretty simple. But there is a lot in it that has to do with due process and notice. And those are the things that we've learned from decisional law really need to be in an ordinance. Thank you.
Can I just?
Vice Mayor Blash, I think she ran, just up first, and that Councilmember Ackerman.
Okay, so, no, I'm happy that, you know, those were great questions and great clarifications. So thank you both. I did want to just mention a couple of things really quickly. There was not an encampment in Ross, per se. That was a protest group that set up a temporary encampment as a way of protesting against Governor Newsom. So, you know, that wasn't like the encampment we have here. I did also just want to mention that people up there are not being ignored. They actually receive services, you know, case managers and outreach workers and police go up there. I've confirmed that again and again and again with the county, with the social service workers, and with the campers themselves, who told us that they were receiving services. There were some people there that were new, so they were less engaged, but people did confirm for us they were receiving services. And for the young woman who gave the really impassioned speech about substance abuse disorders, you know, just keep in mind that we cannot legally force people to seek treatment. So it's not like they're being ignored, it's just that, you know, there is a, and we can't legally force people to seek, in most cases, to seek treatment for mental health issues because we have the Lantrum and Petrus Short Act, which is a state law that says you can't involuntarily confine people just because they have a mental health issue. So, you know, it's like, we are concerned, it's not like we're not compassionate, the county is there working with people. It's just that they're not, you know, being taken away somewhere because we can't do that. And that's, that's just a couple of things that I wanted to confer or, you know, kind of talk about since they came up. And I think people kind of have the impression that somehow nothing's being done, when in fact, a lot is being done. It's just that they happen to still be there while they're receiving the services. So that's all I have to say for now.
Councilmember Ackerman, you wanted to speak?
Well, I, this may not be necessary because it sounds like we're getting down to where we've given the direction we need. But I- we've given the direction we need, but I just had a question, does this, when this event actually happens, that someone is camping and you, through the ordinance, go and bag and tag their belongings and then they need to leave, is that the police that do that? Or was I hearing correctly earlier that there's some other people who do that, for whatever reason, I just wondered to clarify that?
Right, so we would be hiring a crew that is experienced and certified to be able to handle those materials, there would probably be some involvement of the police department to provide, you know, security and help, and they also know the folks who are there, so that can be helpful, but it's not typically police work to do cleanup crew, and we need them on other activities that are, you know, of higher priority for security in town.
So, I would just like to suggest, Councilmember Cacciano was talking about a timeframe, I think, am I wrong that you were talking about a timeframe for when to get the anti-camping ordinance, and then--
It's going to require--
--timeframe in the actual ordinance?
Yeah, well, I think it's, yeah, there's the bringing of the ordinance back, maybe it's in its final form or thereabouts, first reading, then there's a second reading, and then it goes into effect 30 days after that, and then, within there, it has, in addition to the definitions and whatnot, all the due process provisions that were just noted by the town attorney, and that's gonna, you know, it could be a 72-hour notice or something, but it might not be until, or it could be, you know, it's a week notice, I don't know. But all of this stuff plays out in, over the course of a month or two, or months essentially, of the drafting, the passing, and then it going into effect. I mean, I think it's very helpful to have, from Little League, you know, what their desires are for making sure that that space feels safe for the community come the end of February, in terms of when everything needs to play out by, in a way, and also making sure that we're checking in with Gary and the folks at the county, as well, and all the service providers, you know, in the interim. But, yes, I mean, those are, it's the practical policy timeline, and then within the policy itself, like, what is the appropriate, like, timeline for giving notice?
Well, I would just suggest, so, one of the things we've talked about, it was the possibility of doing a special meeting on November 20th for the first reading potentially of the ordinance, and I would ask that the town attorney work with the subcommittee, you know, I think you guys have really taken, obviously, you've spent a lot of hours, a lot of leadership, and hopefully that when it came on November 20th, there would be less questions, or more of it would be in more final form, you know?
It's a very simple ordinance, I mean, what I've seen from what's been enacted elsewhere, it's fairly straightforward.
But you're not objecting to the subcommittee spending some time on it in the next, to work with the town attorney, right? Just to make sure?
Yeah.
Okay, so, I know that--
Well, I just wanted to chime in, because we have two qualified yeses, that I have an immediate family member that's having surgery in the peninsula that day, and I could possibly, quite possibly, zoom in, but as long as that's allowable.
I think we may have more than one conflict with that day, and so you may want to consider putting that on the December 4th meeting.
Well, a couple of things, I would say, you know, I know it's allowable under AB 2449 for Councilmember Helmann to be able to zoom in for medical, for her, for a family member, I don't know if that's going to be workable for her, but I think because there's a lot of concern, I think we ought to try to see if that date could work, and if it doesn't work, then move it on to December 4th, but let's see what we can do. We don't have to set that tonight, but I would just say, let's do what we can to direct you guys to try to work towards that date.
Okay, so it would be a special meeting, it's a 24-hour notice, and perhaps we can send out a request to the council members for their availability that week.
Okay, and, let's, so I think you have direction, and we've got another item that's somewhat similar, which is a, this is item, Agenda Item 3, pursuant to Town Code Sections 2.08, .090, a resident's petition was received regarding code violations, petitioner Sean Fitzgerald. Sean, did you have a presentation or a storyboard, I'm not sure?
Right, thank you. The impetus of this petition tonight was to move the council towards adopting a no camping ordinance, and it was submitted before the council decided to have this conversation as a result of the march through downtown. And so, as such, much of what I'm about to discuss may be rendered moot, so I'm planning to make this a much shorter presentation, and subsequent questions brief, in the interest of not dragging the meeting late into the night. But before I start, I want to implore you, in the process of creating the no camping ordinance, that you please consider creating a citizen oversight committee for this. It's been such a hot issue that weighs so heavy on so many minds in the town, and there's so many people that have been touched by it, that I think it would really build trust in the community to have a citizen oversight during that discussion. So, I would ask you to consider that, just in restoring the trust in this particular topic, since it's been going on for three years. Onto the presentation, so, the reason I'm presenting tonight is due to the concerns raised about the enforcement of our municipal ordinances, particularly in relation to Perry and Cotrotti Park. It is my belief that the current state of our park's encampment would not have been created if the following ordinances were upheld from the outset. I truly believe in the rule of law and the necessity of the following ordinances for maintaining order. Safety in our public spaces, and based on how difficult the enforcement of town code and permits seem to be on law-abiding, tax-paying citizens like Lynette, it sounds like following the laws and rules is of paramount importance, especially to this town council. Now, I don't mean to imply with the following that you should start ticketing every mother if her child drops a cheerio in the park, or that you should cite someone who's walking briskly through the park at night to get home. I'm really looking more for enforcement when there's been repeated calls and reported willful ignoring of those rules, and it has a clear impact on the community's health and well-being. And it's imagined that enforcement will follow when those calls come through. I believe the enforcement of these rules would have prevented the establishment of the encampment by discouraging nighttime use, smoking in the outdoor hangout, and the destruction of parked trees to create a tree fort. Here are the specific ordinances in question. Nighttime use of parks, 12.36.02, this ordinance has been in effect since 2009, long before any camper set up permanent residence. This restricts park use after sunset without permission of the town clerk or designee. However, we have observed individuals camping overnight in these parks on and off for years, but this was in since 2009. Littering and waste disposal, 8.12.02 and 8.12.08 prohibits the deposit of litter in public places and parks, except in designated receptacles. Litter accumulation violates these ordinances, poses an environmental hazard, and detracts from the community's quality of life. The trash is observed in overwhelming quantity scattered all the way down the hillside into the watershed area, where a split-rail fence was installed with a warning sign about it being a sensitive habitat. This ordinance, I'm most curious to get Chance's input on, as you told me in person you're an environmentalist, and I couldn't help but notice the "disrupt the anthracene sticker" on your computer, which, as I understand it, refers to actions and strategies aimed at interrupting humans' impact on Earth's natural systems. And as you walked through the camp recently in the last week, I'm sure you saw for your own eyes just the impact that trash has on the sensitive areas, goes up and over the split-rail, tons of plastic and human waste all the way down in the creek bed. So, it's gotta, it's gotta have a material impact on how you feel about those things. Protection of trees and vegetation, 12.44.01, the unauthorized cutting or damaging of park vegetation is prohibited, yet we see this ordinance being overlooked, contributing to the degradation of trees behind the baseball outfield, and specifically a fairy ring of bay laurel that is beloved by Nancy Clolier, who just called, and others who sought refuge and peace there as a meditation spot. Nuisance declared, 8.24.01, this declares certain conditions on properties as nuisance due to fire hazards or other dangers. The conditions in the encampment apply here, yet no action had been taken. Furniture, propane lighters, propane piles of garbage, stacks of wooden pallets, and it already led to one fire just 50 feet down the hill about a year ago. Smoking and vaping prohibition, and although it's not codified in the ordinance, submitted on the petition, there are posted signs prohibiting smoking and vaping in the parks. This rule intended to promote health and cleanliness is frequently ignored by the park visitors and encampment members. Weed and cigarette smoke waft in the area inhabited by children, there's claims of meth smoke as well. There seems to be no interest by police or town manager to enforce that safety measure. I've even called myself, and the officer on the other line said there is no rule against smoking, even though I was standing in front of a sign that said no. So, as evidence of those violations, I brought this board today that I just assembled, it's just some of the photographs that I've taken, I don't know if anyone has been up there recently, to just see exactly how overwhelming the trash piles are, and even with the offer to have the trash picked up, it's simply littered everywhere. It's next to the skate park, it's along the pathway, it's down the hills. You can see the bay laurel there has been totally taken over by just blankets and wrappings, signs nailed, knife carvings all throughout the tree, it's one of these, like, amazing tree landmarks, it's been totally disfigured. So, really, I'm just gonna shorten the presentation there and open it up to questions that I hope we're able to answer, because a lot of this has just been, you know, a journey of understanding for me, as a relatively new citizen, being here six years and not having had a chance to make a presentation or attend that many meetings, I wasn't sure how this dialogue might go, but I wanted to pose these questions, and maybe you can help me understand why the aforementioned ordinances are not being enforced in Perry and Cotrotti Park. So, is it based on discretion, or is it because you wish to show leniency to a specific group of people? Or have you felt pressure from outside forces that you may be hearing from, maybe like Jason Sarras or homeless advocacy groups, that you feel if you enforce our laws, they're going to seek legal retribution against the town? So, question mark there, and maybe I'll finish the other questions, and you can let me know if you can answer those. And then I want to know who is responsible for the enforcement of the ordinances? So, the way I read it, it's typically the jurisdiction of the town manager that would enforce those ordinances, obviously in cooperation with the police, but I would love some clarity. So, is there a directive from the town council specifically advising against the enforcement of these laws in the park? And is it discretionary decisions by the town manager, then, possibly due to lack of resources or another conflicting policy? Or perhaps we need an additional officer on a night, and clear directives from the town manager to have those rules enforced? And last, has a member of the town staff or council ever provided permission to anyone camping behind the field to use the park after sunset? We've had that ordinance since 2009, I'm just curious if permission has ever been granted. So, your responses would really help me understand the town's approach to how we act on ordinances, especially since we're talking about adopting a new one, which is going to go into effect. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Sean. I would just say, before, I don't know that we have answers to all your questions, just to be honest, but why don't we see if there are questions of Sean from council members first? I don't see any.
And I just want to say really quickly that I have talked to Sean a lot, so it's not like I'm being disrespectful here, I've actually talked to him a lot and asked him a lot of questions, I'm kind of like, hmm, what else could I ask? So, thank you.
All right, and I know there was quite a list. Sean, would you mind turning your mic off just for right now, if we ask you to speak, just create some feedback? You know, I believe it's code enforcement rather than police, but I'm not sure. Could we, town manager, town attorney, try to respond to some of the questions? I know, town attorney, you mentioned that those ordinances from the past, you don't feel are the kind of things you can use for anti-camping, but is there a couple of things that you can just sort of tick off in some of the responses?
You know, I've already spoken about 12.36.
Well, maybe you can just repeat it, just for clarification.
12.36 is not something we would, I would recommend we use for trying to remove an encampment, it is not up to date with current court cases, it's not designed for that purpose, it's designed for some other purpose, I'm not sure what that is, because it doesn't state what its purpose is. I would, it is lacking in standards, for example, I would hesitate, that ordinance predates me, and so I would not, it's not something I would present to the council and recommend they adopt. Nuisance provisions, I believe you mentioned, those are private property, nuisances on private property, we're talking about public property, so--
Janet, you're not really speaking directly into the mic.
Sorry.
You know, I know I do it too, but speak more directly into the mic.
So, the nuisance provisions are nuisances on private property, we're talking about public property. I don't know, what are, littering, that's not going to get to the heart of an encampment. An encampment is, do not camp here, do not have camping equipment, do not sleep here, do not keep your belongings here, do not live here. And that's what you have to really try to get at in an anti-camping ordinance. That's all I can remember of the things--
Okay, so there's, Sean, just a couple of things, as you said, I think we've moved on from some of the issues, and we're talking about an anti-camping ordinance, which would be more robust, and I think both Vice Mayor Blash and Councilmember Cacciano will continue to converse with you all during, you know, what we can learn from you. But I also want to say, there's some perception out there that nothing has been done, and I think Vice Mayor Blash sort of outlined, there's been a lot done, and I also think, just one thing to be really careful about, I know you want to visit the encampment, but there is some potential fear by folks in the encampment of men coming in, standing over them, asking them questions. So, they are human beings, and some of them have, you know, issues, but we need to also be respectful, and so I would hope that we can work through the next few weeks, or even to December 4th. Michael, did you have something you wanted to add?
A couple of things. One, the campers have actually been very happy to have engagement and not be unseen. Everybody wants to be seen and feel real. The campers certainly have a boundary of respect, but it's very simple, it's like before boarding a boat or going to somebody's house, you ask permission, and then if you're invited in, and I have found everybody to be extremely friendly. The reason that Sean took this time to articulate for you a very clear process was to help you come up with a petition with a date certain, that you could come back to the public and say, we're going to do something by this date, that even with the prior conversation has not been done. There's been a discussion, there's a discussion on the 20th, and then we'll check calendars, that's not a date certain, that could be decided right now, tonight. The most important thing that there is alluding to, but not concise, is the, the community has lost faith in this process, three years, there's been a lot of tolerance, a lot of problems that haven't come up on some of the logs. The citizens of this community, myself included, and that's where we brought this about, they want a seat at the table, they want to understand what this ordinance is, they want to understand how it's going to be implemented, how it will be enforced. Janet brought up some very good points in her prior ordinances, they don't have some of the required current definitions, that can be easily added tonight, if you guys are prepared. They, we don't have the current due process, but as for bag and tag, as is referenced, these are very simple rental laws, in case somebody abandons their property in a rental unit or anything else, this is before you right now, this should-- This should be something that's rolling off your tongues. So really, the petition, and Sean has worked like a dog for this. He's done all of your jobs 10 times. He's asking for a date certain. He's asking for a specific process that everybody can understand, and can understand when something is or is not enforced. Thank you.
Thank you. So I just want to ask, we can go to public comment. I want to ask for folks who have commented on the prior item and with similar comments. You don't need to, to give the same comments again. If you'd like to, you may, but I think if you have something new to add, that would be useful. So I would like to open it up to public comment now.
One comment. With the general public coming in and adding their feedback, because this petition that Sean brought forth to you is to invite the public to the table. So I would like Sean to reserve the right, that after the public makes their input, that you can ask these questions of Sean and have this dialogue, so everybody has the benefit of hearing the conversation. Thank you.
We're not going to be able to decide on November 20th tonight. Their staff has to figure that out. And I know you think all these items are easy. They are not that simple. And so we will do our best. And with that, I'd like to open it to public comment, please. And reminder, folks, if you have something new to add, that would be really helpful. But if you want to repeat your old comment, you can do that, too. Thank you.
Hello. I'm Jennifer. I live in Fairfax. I wanted to address the Vice Mayor Blash's topic about avoiding excessive costs and liability that she was speaking of earlier. What is the legal exposure of the town of Fairfax when people who live at the camp do things that are against the codes of conduct or laws, and they don't want to follow the laws? I feel that puts the town at great risk. It puts other people of the town at great risk. And I'd just like you guys to figure that out, because I think we've all been waiting for that answer. Thank you.
Your next speaker, please.
So I have been, I will refer to the young lady who was imploring you to help these people. I have been dealing with people with mental issues and drug addiction for a long time. And my question is, rhetorical question, if these, if there is an ordinance and somebody does not, one of the campers does not want to leave, and they attach themselves to a tree, how do you remove them? Do you call law enforcement and take them to jail? Or how else do you deal with them? And there is a current ordinance, what I heard tonight, is that you cannot leave, you cannot stay in the park past sunset. So I understand why it cannot be, why it is not being enforced, because if that was enforced, we would not need a new ordinance. But having people citations, if they go to jail, that's when these people get help. Because when they show, show up in front of the judge, if they have a drug substance issue, the judge will order treatment. And if they have a mental issue, they will end up at Unit A and get help. So this is the only way to get help for these people. Prison is awful, but their civil liberties, et cetera, you cannot force them. And yes, actually, you can force these people into treatment, because they're 51, 50. They go to Marin General, to Unit A, and they get treatment, because they are gravely disabled. They cannot take care of themselves. So this is, it sounds very harsh, but this is what it is.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
I'll be really short. So I have worked in psychiatry in this county for 40 years. And if you see somebody who's a danger to themselves, a danger to others, or gravely disabled, which means they really can't provide food, clothing, or shelter for themselves, you can call 911. The police will come out, they will assess them. There is a psychiatric emergency team in the county. They might come out and assess them. They will either go to Unit A, or jail, or home. Or then, and there's a crisis unit where they can keep them for 24 hours. So the community really needs to be educated about this. And I don't know how involved you all are about it, and if you connect with the county, because these are all county services. So anyway, thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. PJ?
First, just, I heard a question from Councilmember Hellman earlier on the need to store property, what the issue is. It's stealing. I mean, this is people's belongings, and if you take it from them and you don't give them the opportunity.
Did you move the mic up a little bit? Sorry.
If you take their belongings and you don't give them the opportunity to access it, that's stealing. The government can't steal people's stuff any more than we can. That's why you need to have access. We've heard a lot of really devastating stories about how crime is affecting people's lives and addiction. And for some reason, the solution here is not to address the crimes, drug use, violence. You can be arrested for that. For some reason, the, the solution here is to make up a rule saying, we're going to arrest you for living here. We're going to make that the crime, because you have nowhere else to go, and we're going to arrest you for that, because we, I guess, don't want to arrest you for a more serious It's, it's horrible. I mean, it's tragic. When we talk about the Grants Pass decision that everyone's eager to take advantage of, that was the decision by the far-right majority over the desperate pleas of Justice Sotomayor and the liberal minority on the court, who tried to make clear that what this, what anti-camping ordinances do is criminalize a person's status, the same way you can't put someone in jail merely for addiction. It's the same legal reasoning until this decision, for why you can put someone in jail for being homeless, for having nowhere else to go. That's why the rule was you have to provide somewhere for them to go. It would be a tragedy to waste resources that could be used ameliorating the issue by trying to set up emergency shelters for inclement weather, which the county is in desperate need of, or other options, and, and instead spend those resources on taking people's stuff, they're going to get it back, they can go back over and over and over again, or putting them in jail, they'll get out, they can come, like, what, there's no permanent solution here unless you want to lock people up for life because they're poor.
Thank you.
To women who spoke before, who are healthcare workers for people like the people who are homeless, I think they, they make a lot of sense. And I think people here are trying to be very empathetic to homeless. They're not being empathetic to people who live here. But I think sometimes you have to do some hard empathy to get people to a place where they can really be helped. And I, I want to urge you to do that.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, I want to back up what Mallory said earlier. My name's Todd Greenberg. And to clarify, she said $200, but it was actually $2,100 that was recently stolen, apparently. And the person has been charged with stealing. That was a camper there. And I want to ask Mayor Kohler, why you're so hesitant to represent the rest of the population of Fairfax? We all want to help people, or most of us want to help people, but when you're harming everyone else by not taking action, it's, is it accurate? Somebody told me that you apparently wrote in to the IJ some letter, and you were welcoming people, refugees and homeless to Fairfax. Is that accurate? I, 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 I just can't imagine. How many homeless can we, what, I'm sorry if that's inaccurate.
They're not accurate.
Okay, thank you for clarifying. It is, how many can we accommodate here? Are we opening up a bust from the borders coming up here? I mean, you know, I've said to Councilman Cotrano before, what you're trying to do here is completely out of scale with a small town. Why can't we fix this? Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Deb London. I completely agree with Todd, and I don't, can't understand why you're letting four or five people rule or take over what you need to do for the 7,000. It's just, it's, it's not right. It's insane. You, you have to worry about the rest of us and the kids and all, and everyone else, not four people. They just have to go. And also, I don't understand this ordinance, especially if we already have a no camping ordinance. And I think that, like Mallory said, or one of us back there said, a sign that says no camping, and enforce that. A lot cheaper than all this ordinance, a 35-page ordinance. And yes, we do want a seat at the table regarding this, because we've seen what happened when that didn't, didn't go down well, did it? So, so, you know, we need a seat at the table with this. I say, no, the sign, no camping, back it up. You know, it's like, and let, don't let four or five people, who are not even from here, control your decisions at the expense of the families that live here, and the, and the 7,000 of us that live here. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Mark Bell, Fairfax. I mean, there's one lady there who has three tents. Really? Three tents. She has so much stuff. I guess it's when Sausalito gave her $18,000 to leave Sausalito, she bought another couple tents and moved to Fairfax. I mean, what? Maybe the, maybe the not being in the park between sunset and sunrise isn't the best ordinance, but it's the one we have now, and it's pretty clear. What more do you need to make, to take immediate action? I've been, I was homeless in Marin. My friends were homeless in Marin. We never thought about camping out at the, at the pavilion. Never crossed our minds. Why would we do something like that? Of course, we also didn't call our drug dealers up on our cell phones and have them drive our drugs over either. Three years. Really? Three years? Supposedly, Councilmember Cotrano has all these connections all over the place, at the county, hanging out with Huffman, who's, that's another story. What's happening? Like, nothing. It took Sean to get any action from anybody, and he has a list of questions, and you're like, well, I don't know if we can answer them all tonight. Well, why not? He came up with them. He's looked at the situation. He's worked at it. He's accomplished more than you have in a very short period of time. I think if you're looking at having the public weigh in, they would be the one.
Next, are there any more speakers in the room? Mark's, Mark, thank you.
I'm Mark, and I'm here in, from Cannon Village. I don't really know why I'm here tonight, except that I'm getting a headache, and this is very hard, all of the stuff that we have, you all have to deal with. I used to work with the SAFE team in San Rafael. It's a program that is very helpful to try and work with people. And the CARE team is a, is a good team that builds trust over time. But my thought is that this should have happened already. And I don't understand, either I missed it, the town code, I think, Janet, you said it dealt with private property only, but I, it sounds like there already was something that says you can't be in there overnight. So I don't, as I've heard other people say, how come they were allowed to stay? I mean, what should have happened? And I'm encouraged, maybe it took way too long, but I think I'm in favor of establishing a, an anti-camping ordinance that will not allow people to be there. Where are they going to go? That's obviously an unknown question. Maybe San Rafael is going to take care of people. It's not an infinite number of people that don't have housing. But I hope that it will go through faster than, and maybe like Lynette Shaw's thing can happen faster to resolve this. So I wish everybody luck.
Thank you. Michael, no, we're done. We're done. Oh, thank you so much. Just one thing to be clear, there's close to 1,000 people in Marin that are homeless, and there are 144 shelter beds in Marin. So there's not a lot of places for folks. I want to bring it back.
We, we have three speakers on Zoom.
I'm sorry. Oh, I forgot about Zoom? I'm sorry. I keep forgetting about Zoom.
The first speaker is Nicole, followed by Deb. Nicole, you are unmuted. She just dropped off. So Deb, you are unmuted.
Deborah Benson Cascades, thank you for hearing me. I wanted to make a comment about the, the pollution and the defecation and using the, using a park as a bathroom. And, and one of the council members, I believe it was Lethal, mentioned that the campers said, oh, no, we wouldn't, we wouldn't, you know, we wouldn't use our, our home as a bathroom, and that the police station was available. Well, I don't know what you all want to do when you first get up in the morning, but I know what I want to do, I don't want to do, is walk about two or three blocks to, to be able to use the bathroom. And I think, I think it's silly to think that these people are, are going to do that. I want to talk about the tree, about, I'm on the tree committee. About a year and a half ago, I walked the park with our town arborist and members of Fire Safe Marin, and including the, the place where the campers are, and the circle of bay trees that they're using, that they've nailed things to, which hurts me. Our arborist said that ring was unsafe, that those, the little trees could fall in on people, and they should be removed. And they weren't. So we're talking about liability, that there's a, there's a liability there that hasn't been tended to, and I would like to see the tree protected. So that's about all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Deb. Next speaker, please.
The next speaker is Cindy. Cindy, you are unmuted.
Hi, yes, Cindy Ross again. I, I just have a couple of questions about, you know, the, the attorney was just saying that, you know, she wouldn't recommend using our town ordinances in relation to the situation with these people camping. But what, what, what's the purpose of having an ordinance if you're selectively deciding, you know, who, who's going to be subject to fines, or who's not, who's permitted to do certain things? I mean, I know, I, I can guarantee that if I decided to set up a tent in the park, or if I decided... or if I decided to, you know, nail things to the tree or if I brought, you know, all my trash and, and just left it or if I went to the bathroom in the creek, you know, I bet I would be arrested. You know, and what, I, I don't understand why you can't say, no, you can't litter here. No, you can't spend, you know, there's an ordinance. It says you can't be here overnight. You know, I'm not saying that every person that wants to walk through the park at night needs to be arrested. But why, why are you selectively saying that people who, you know, people can stay overnight, but I can't? So I, I, I'm just really, really concerned about the hypocrisy and, and why you're, you're making exceptions. Yes, I have compassion for people. I've, I've spent times where I've been homeless and haven't had the resources. But I wouldn't think of, of, you know, violating laws and causing such distress to, to my community, just because I, you know, I, I don't know. I, I'm just really upset about this. I just don't.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
There are no more speakers on Zoom.
Okay, uh, bringing it back to the council. I'm not sure that there's more on this item. I'm sorry, I'm not feeling very well. Vice Mayor Blash?
Yeah, I mean, um, we can, you know, ask our officer here some of this. But, um, my understanding from talking to our chief of police and from the police logs that our town attorney just referenced, people are being, um, told that they need to follow town ordinances and that the police do enforce. And the issue with the, you know, why haven't you done something over three years? Because we had a federal court ruling that said we could not do something. So, um, that was the reason why people were not, you know, pushed out of that spot, because we had a federal court ruling that said you cannot do that. But my understanding is that, um, other issues are enforced, and that's why we have police logs that show that they're being enforced. Um, you know, perhaps other people on staff could clarify that. We have not issued anything to our police telling them that they can't enforce laws. Um, and I, saying this because I talk to our chief of police on a regular basis and, you know, say, is there anything else that I can do for you to allow you to, you know, enforce these laws? So, you know, it's not like we're not in touch with them. And then I just wanted to kind of reiterate a couple of things. So San Rafael, will San Rafael take care of them? No. We had a lot of questions about San Rafael's sanctioned encampment. That encampment receives funding just for the people who are on Mahan Path, because it, it is a encampment resolution fund, which is meant to address that one encampment and clear it by putting people into temporary housing and then hopefully permanent housing. So, I mean, a lot of people have been really excited about that, but it's not something that we can, you know, say, hey, take our campers. And, um, because it's, it's precluded by the funding they receive, it is there to resolve the camp on Mahan Path, not to take all the homeless in the county. So, I mean, I think that's important to know, and I know people are disappointed by that. Um, and I do just want to mention about, you know, the bathroom thing. Yeah, I'm not watching people every minute to see where they're going to the bathroom. But I have been told repeatedly by campers that this is what they do. And also, I have observed on a number of occasions, campers coming out of that bathroom. So, you know, like I said, I can't 100% confirm that that's all they do, but have seen it. And, uh, that's it for me.
Can I, am I able to jump in on a comment?
I think we're not doing a back and forth right now. We're having a council deliberation, but we'll wait till the mayor comes back.
Maybe we can take a break.
Yeah, yeah.
Because it's really not appropriate to have a back and forth discussion at a council meeting. May, may I suggest we take a five-minute break?
Five minutes, wait for the mayor.
Okay, sorry, I'm not feeling so well. Thank you.
Great. Yeah, just would like to, to provide a, a reply to some of that. I appreciate the, the conversation. So a few things, um, Leesel, in regards to the bathrooms, I've, I've been up there every single day for the last seven weeks. Uh, and also, this is in response to you, Barbara. It took me seven weeks till I actually formally got invited to sit down. So I wasn't invading anyone's property. I was there with Mike. And, uh, we were invited into the camp. And, uh, every time I pass through there, they, they make sure to wave, wave me down and say hi. And, and it's very, uh, it's a very civil conversation regarding the bathroom, Leesel. They are going to the bathroom in chamber pots, and they're bagging it, throwing it away in the garbage. Um, that was, that was admitted by one of the female campers and one of the male campers. So they're not all, it's, it's too far to go to the, the police station when they want to relieve themselves. And, um, in regards to Jonathan's place, there are two to three beds that open up every single week. I've been in direct contact with Paul as well and a board member. I've been having great conversations with the campers. And two of them expressed interest. They really wanted to, to learn about Jonathan's place. None of them were aware of it. They didn't know it was called Mill Street or Jonathan's Place. Showed them photos of it. They thought it looked really nice to express interest. And so Mike and I made an agreement with them that we'd come back and help them make the phone call on Monday. Space was available, as it always is on, on a Monday, two to three beds. There is a, a large demand for it. But Paul has said expressly that if a town council member, um, made it known that we want, you know, to put a camper from Fairfax, they, they would prioritize to the best of their ability. But we went in to make the phone call, and the camper said, changed their mind. They had received several of her visits and, uh, decided they didn't want to be indoors at all. It made them nervous to be inside walls. One didn't like, uh, an urban setting. And she said she prefers to camp outside, and that's where she's going to remain. So, you know, in considering that these are people and you're wanting to be compassionate about the resolution, do understand that some of them have said they do not want to be indoors. They prefer an outdoor living. And that's a hard thing to wrap our heads around, because we think, oh, we just provide them the solution that we're used to, and they're going to accept it. But if you talk to them long enough, you'll find out they, they absolutely are afraid of being indoors. And so they came from somewhere outdoors, they found our place outdoors. And eventually, if they don't want to accept, you know, a shelter type of situation or they're not on a housing priority list, it's going to be a continued outdoor living for them. And that sounds odd to us, but it's acceptable to them. So for them, it's probably going to be the best solution to find a, an outdoor living space that's acceptable. So in thinking about that resolution, Bruce, I know that's something you, you were concerned of, that they do want to be outside.
Thank you.
I hope the council will take the time to really thank Sean for all his efforts of doing this, not only for our community, not only doing your job, but also showing compassion to the campers that really need another alternative. So this is the gentleman that took care of this, brought forth a reasonable request that you finally do something after three years. And I hope you will.
Thank you. Okay, so, um, I think, Vice Mayor Blash, I'm hoping we can sort of.
Yeah, let's let it go. I just want to say that I talked to the social work teams quite a lot, and there is some real concern about the confusion and stress it causes some of the campers to be approached by multiple people offering things when they thought they were getting it from their caseworker, from their outreach person. And then there's another person coming and saying, I'm going to give it to you. So I think it's really great that people are wanting to take this initiative. I think to some extent, there's a little bit of a misunderstanding that there are people working with them and building rapport with them, and have been doing it for a long time. And yes, sometimes we get newer campers that are not yet engaged, but there is a process, and there are people going there and working with them. You know, called people over and over and over again. Every time I talk to Sean, he says something's not happening. I call people, and they're like, oh, yeah, we're there. So I just want to, you know, keep that in mind, that it's great that people are taking some initiative. But, um, we need to also keep in mind that there are people working with them who are professionals who have established rapport with them.
I'll just add one final thing, which is, which has come up at prior council meetings, because we do talk about this a couple of times a year. But, um, you know, we have had press in the past about this. The Chronicle wrote about the, you know, big concerns over the two-person encampment a couple of years ago. And then both of those people were housed. I think the, the thing that I learned when I got on council, and there were already people living back behind there. And Grants Pass wasn't yet a thing, but Martin v. Boise was a thing. And this was, you know, already, we're thrust into the pandemic. There are people there. We're now under these court orders that limit what we, we can do or open us up to certain legal risks. But in talking with a number of the campers back there at that time, they were all super recalcitrant. They were not, or what we would call housing resistant, maybe. And they believed that they were super resilient and that they were happy with the way that things were. And I was fortunate enough to witness that over the course of time, with trust building, with resources and connecting with folks, that the CARE team doesn't, doesn't necessarily go there multiple times a week and say one thing, which is, are you ready for housing right now? Are you ready for housing right now? Are you ready for housing right now? When are you going to get into housing? No, they bring them food, they bring them resources, they check in on them. What do you need? Do you need new socks? I can help you go get a new SIM card. SIM card, we can reload it. They do a number of these things, because over time, rebuilding trust in a system that has totally left these folks behind is one of the tools that we have used to house a number of people back there. We've seen it firsthand. We, we, we know how it works. So yes, there might be people who are not ready. And as much as we pressure them right now, saying, it's Monday morning, are you ready to go? It's Monday morning, are you ready to go? I just encourage folks to, to continue to build relationships that are rooted in, in actually trying to, to meet people where they're at. And, um, you know, the hope is that over time, those relationships bear fruit, and we're able to actually get people exactly what they need when, when they really need it. So, thank you.
So, uh, thank you to Vice Mayor Blash and Councilmember Cuttrono. I know you all have spent tremendous amount of time. And, uh, I think we have direction to move forward. We've asked that you look and see if November 20th is possible. And, um, like to see if we can do that. And hopefully that will work for Vice Mayor. I mean, I'm sorry, I just gave you a new position, Councilmember Hellman. But, um, I'd also, moving on, I would like to say this is item four, which I very much wanted it to be on this agenda. It's 11:15, and I know we've kept our planning director on. I, I, it's all right, he's at home. Maybe it's not all right. But I think we should continue this one, because I'm not sure that, you know, we've had some pretty lengthy discussions and pretty heavy discussions. So I'd rather that we continue it.
Thank you, Mayor.
And so I think we can move on and thank Planning Director Byswinger for hanging in there with us. And also thank the Planning Commission for really taking up the mantle on making revisions to the short-term rental ordinance, which we found after a couple of years after the original company sort of got bought and stopped doing work, that, uh, you know, we found that it was very difficult to register people because maybe we were too short-sighted when we started out. And I want to thank Lieutenant Cade for being with us tonight and for all your efforts and your colleagues in the police department. So appreciate you staying with us so late, as always. And with that, before we move on to open time, and we purposely moved open time a little later because we felt that other discussions were pretty important to get upfront. But I just want to say this, and maybe it's not an issue, but before we begin open time tonight, I'd like to say that I appreciate if speakers would refrain from using profanity and are disparaging people based on race, religion, orientation, or country of origin. And I'm aware that our ability to silence these types of comments is constrained by the Brown Act and the First Amendment. I'm asking everyone to please be civil and refrain from such disparagement in your comments. What I can do, however, I'm not sure that I can, because the mic's broken, is to disconnect anyone whose comments disrupt the orderly conduct of our meeting and are absent appropriate findings, are not under the council's subject matter jurisdiction or are not germane to the topic or matter being discussed. And should I determine an individual's comments are not within our subject matter jurisdiction or disruptive, I will disconnect. And let's just do our best. It's getting late, and just mention on open time. This is for items not on the agenda. All comments are limited to two minutes. The council is not permitted to take action, and state law strictly limits the right of the council to discuss any un-agendized item, government code 54954.2. If there are still raised hands after 30 minutes, open time will be continued to the end of the agenda. But I also want to say that I don't, uh, we'll do 15 minutes in the room and then go to Zoom. So with that, it is 11:15, I believe. Uh, let's get started with open time, please. First speaker.
Michael McIntosh. Firstly, I'd like to read you something that I shared with Ms. Middleton tonight. A taking-through inverse condemnation can occur when a property owner or occupant leases, or excuse me, loses a use permit due to rezoning, essentially rendering the property significantly less valuable if the rezoning is deemed to have effectively taken the property's reasonable economic use, depriving the owner of most of their property rights, thus entitling them to compensation from the government under the Takings Clause of the Constitution. So in looking at this, each and every business that is losing their home at School Street Plaza from your rezoning is entitled to sue you guys and has legal standing. Next subject. In the event that I don't see everybody, since there'll be a change in the council, and I certainly share my opinions with you guys, I would like to say thank you to Bruce for, you've always had a very pleasant and calming demeanor, and I appreciate that. But I really want to give a, a shout out to Chance. Of all my interactions, I cannot think of a single time that Chance was not polite, courteous, and respectful to the audience. And so I really do want to acknowledge that and thank him. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please, Wendy.
Hi, I'm tired at this point, so I hope this comes out. I'm speaking tonight because I still care as the person who sparked the very first rental protection laws during my 11 years as a Fairfax resident over five years ago, not part of any group at all. I begged for renter protections here and in Marin County when there were none at all, including in the state, as rental, as the rental crisis issues began long ago. I wonder what happens to that original law now that the new laws no longer apply. I'm speaking tonight as I have sadly witnessed a lack of care for renters' voices, concerns, and interests being erased and silenced with nastiness, disrespect, disenfranchisement, false assumptions, and misinformation, including towards town council members during the whole process of the most recent campaign here. I'm speaking to ask the community, including newly-elected town council members and housing providers, big and small, to include renters at the table in any process going forward and not drop the fact we are still in a serious housing crisis despite state laws affecting fellow community members. Nothing about us without us, just like with the houseless campers in town. I wish for kindness and empathy in all of Fairfax.
Thank you, Wendy. Next speaker, please.
Mark Bell, Fairfax. I think it's time that the council start to look at getting out of flood zone nine. Think Heather McPhail, I'm not going to butcher her last name, hit the nail on the head when she said we really need to do something about the funding for an agency, which really has not come across with, with what people were hoping for after the 2005, 2006 flood that we went through. And I think if you look at your one's property taxes, I think our assessment was about $140 for that. We've been paying that since this thing came forth. I'm sure other people are paying a lot more. They're not doing anything except creating a bureaucracy. And we've seen way too much of that going on. And, uh, as far as the nastiness, I would like to thank the people who were quite nasty on the nose. I would like to thank the people who were quite nasty on the no side because I think you really pushed a lot of people into voting yes on I. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Hi, Todd Greenberg. Curious why we're doing open time so late this evening. It's, for the record, for those listening to subsequent recording, it's 11:21 at night. Now we're finally getting to have open time. Most people have gone home already. So it's sort of stifling to their ability to speak. The election will be more or less known final at the end of this week, according to Marin County Elections Office. And I think you've now seen how the majority of people feel, democratically feel, and voted. And I just wonder whether any of you have any guilt or shame for disregarding all of us for so long and putting us all through what you've put us through for the last two or three years? How much of our lives and our finances you've jeopardized? And how much frustration you've caused? Do you have any guilt? I'm just really amazed at how self-righteous all of you have been and how disregarding the majority of Fairfax. I'm sorry to be the one to have to say it. But it's just been an appalling process. And, you know, I've witnessed how they handled it in San Anselmo related to rent control. And once the signatures went out and there was a referendum, we didn't, they didn't get blocked by their lawyer. There was a referendum, and then the town council members went, you know what? The people want to vote on this.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Thank you. And thanks to Wendy for her comments on the rent control. I think it's unfortunate that it is so late when we're doing open time for public comment. But I feel like there's probably fewer people in the room that voted against ending slavery in California. So cheers to that. It's, the cognitive dissonance in this town is incredible. We had a meeting that spent well over an hour complaining about a not-forcause eviction by a landlord of tenants and businesses at School Street Plaza. And the thought process is the government should have done something to stop this unjust not-for-cause eviction, except for the laws that would prevent a not-for-cause eviction. It's completely ridiculous. It's disappointing. And I blame myself in part because I think it's clear that people who can speak and have a platform, people in positions of leadership, need to do more to stop these destructive narratives right when they start, instead of letting them grow and fester and become the types of conspiracies that spread throughout society and cause a lot of harm, like we're going to see coming up as a result of the most recent election. You know, people, we'll run with a narrative if it's not forcefully countered immediately. If people think somehow there's going to be fewer houses on the market because of rent control, as if a house is built in a day, and that's how supply and demand works because of macro econ 101. It's absurd. And we all need to do more to push back.
Thank you. Are there any more speakers in the room? No, all right. Are there any speakers on Zoom?
There are three speakers on Zoom. The first speaker is Deb, followed by Kay. Deb, you're unmuted.
Thank you, Deborah Benson Cascades. Thank you, council, for hearing me. I have one comment, comment in regards to the last reporting, the financial reporting. At the end of the check register, there was a.
Deb, that's on consent. That's not open time.
Or do we, have we gone over consent?
No, we, we're doing open time. So would you mind calling back in?
Oh, so we're going to go on to consent?
Yeah, that'll be next.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm getting mixed up at that time.
The next speaker is Kay, followed by Michael. Kay, you are unmuted.
Hi, I didn't want to talk about this, but then when I heard another comment, actually a couple more comments. I hope people take accountability for what happened in this election. The people that voted against measure, I mean, the people that voted for Measure I were not Republicans, were not elitists, were not classists. I've been called more names in my lifetime recently. We did not misrepresent, we did not lie. The only way we're going to come together is to stop this division and look at what people are saying and why it failed. I do believe you are all responsible for the renter protection being none in all of Marin. Everybody followed what happened in Fairfax because it was such onerous, sloppy legislation. And there are still things, there were still things wrong in it the second time around. Just take accountability. Let's stop being, let's try to not be so divisive. I like most, the vast majority of you up there, I really, really, really like. And I really believe every single one of you has their heart in the right place, and you're trying to do the right thing. But we need to come to somewhere in the middle because the far left, the far left, like the DSA calling, I think they really helped with Trump being voted. And you guys helped with Colbert being voted. I mean, calling Biden.
Thank you, Kay. Next speaker, please. The next speaker is Michael. Michael, you are unmuted.
Thank you very much. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, thank you.
This is Michael Sexton, longtime Fairfax resident. I just want to say I agree definitely with what Michael Mack, Todd, and Mark Bell had to say. But I also want to publicly thank all the people who advocated earnestly for their side of the recent local measures in Fairfax, especially on Measure I. I am a little angry at the kind of the waste of time and energy over the last two years. But one of the greatest benefits that stemmed from the recent election was the increase in civic and political engagement from all of the residents. I'm amazed and proud to live in the town whose residents feel so strongly about local issues and want to keep the special, charming, small-town feel that's the defining attribute of this community. Citizen democracy was at its finest display in the last few days when we all came together at the intersection and peacefully, yet strongly advocated for our own sides of the issue. I'm happy to call all the people there my neighbors. Although we have differences, we are united in our desire to see Fairfax not only survive, but to thrive. And although we may take different paths to that end, I hope that the journey will stay friendly and civil. I look forward to see what happens, what develops next in our town in the years and months and years to come. Thank you, guys, very much.
Thank you, Michael. Are there others? There are no more speakers on Zoom.
Okay, so bringing it back, we have the 11:30 rule, and we've just got consent next. So any matter not started will be continued unless somebody wants to make a motion.
I'm happy to make a motion to waive the 11:30 rule.
Okay, so that was Councilmember Cuttrano, Second Ackerman. Would you take a roll call vote, Madam Clerk?
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Ackerman.
Press on.
Councilmember Hellman. Councilmember Cuttrano.
Let's do it.
Vice Mayor Blash.
Yes.
Mayor Kohler.
Yes, okay. So moving on to consent. The council may approve the entire consent calendar with one action vote. And the alternative items on the consent calendar may be removed by any town council or staff member for separate discussion and vote. Public comment for items on the consent calendar happens once rather than after each individual item. During the public comment period on consent items, speakers may comment on any items from this section of the agenda. Each speaker will have up to two minutes and may only speak once. And I want to mention two things. One is for item 11, we have a supplement. But the second thing is for item, the, why don't I see it?
Mayor, if I may, if any of the council. Correct me if I'm wrong.
I'm not wanting to pull it.
Understood. If any of the council wants to vote for all of the items except for one and say no to that, I have seen that before.
Yeah, well, basically, I want to mention that I don't want to pull it, but I want to give you all some feedback on the item dealing with the Marin Wildfire Prevention Authority JPA agreement, and that is item 12. And I'll just provide, so I would like to be a separate vote on that, item 12, but not necessarily pulling it. And I'll just, I'll just give my comments briefly. Well, I'll do it after we see if anybody wants to pull anything because I can't find them. No, it's not that. Okay, so I'll just, so I'll have to do it from memory. So I was on the original group for revising the JPA agreement. And originally, when we worked on it, there were some minor revisions that needed some work. Basically, there was an issue where one of, one of the member agencies actually consolidated. And so there was a discussion of should they be removed and not have a vote? And so that was what sort of triggered it. But one of the items that came up subsequent is there's a provision in the JPA agreement which talks about indemnification and also insurance. And I had some big concerns. This item came up right beforehand because there was something that happened with a member agency. And so under Section 14, Insurance and Indemnification, there's a provision that talks about Marin Wildfire may use self-insurance and may contract with a member for insurance services. These are taxpayers' dollars, and it brings in about $19 to $20 million a year for 10 years. Marin Wildfire, whether or not it's legal for, if there was a big lawsuit against some work that we did, or a member agency did, we, we're not the state of California who does self-insurance. So in essence, if there was a big lawsuit, you could wipe out many millions of the $19 to $20 million a year. And I felt very concerned that self-insuring or even going with a member agency could be a problem, potential conflict. So the other item I had was there was also a discussion of that complete indemnification of member agencies. There's a lot of work going on with all the member agencies. There's 17 member agencies. There's a lot of subcontracting going out. And my concern was that it was just a straight old indemnification. And so one of the things I was able to get changed, and I met with members of the executive committee, I met with the lawyer, was I was able to get changed language in Section 14 that basically said they would indemnify unless the liabilities were caused solely by the gross negligence or willful misconduct of any indemnity. So I was able to get that change made. But what I wasn't able to get changed was the self-insurance provision, which I thought made no sense for an agency that's purely taxpayers' dollars. And whether or not there is some provision that you could spend taxpayers' dollars to settle a lawsuit or proceed with a lawsuit, I'm not sure. But I also felt that we could wipe out the entire money by a big lawsuit. So I did meet with folks. I brought it before the meeting. I also brought it to the board when it came to the board. And I was outvoted. So I just want folks to understand I'm fighting for what our tax dollars are for. And I think we could have easily made some changes. But I was completely outvoted. It was a 16 to 1 vote. And it's, no matter what, in order for the JPA agreement to be changed, it requires 2/3 of the member agencies to agree to it. And I think a number of them already have. And just based on my pleas to the board and working with the executive committee beforehand, you know, maybe I'm wrong. But I just wanted you folks to know. So I think I'm planning on voting no on this item because I need to stand up for what I believe in. And others may decide yes or no, that's fine. But I think it's going to pass. And I also want to say that there are some, you know, there are some improvements. And when this first JPA agreement was done, it was before the measure passed. It had a, you know, a provision that if it didn't pass, it all went away. There were also things, there are two jurisdictions in the county that opted out, and they may want to opt in in the future. And there's an ability to do that because I think Tiburon and Belvedere may burn, just a question or an issue. So I just want you folks to know that, but just wanted to raise that. So with that, I think nobody wants to pull anything from the agenda. And I would open it up to public comment.
If I can make just.
Oh, I'm sorry.
A couple of quick comments regarding two of the items. Item 10, I just wanted to give a shout out to Cheryl Sheik, Shaf, who's on our Climate Action Committee. She does great work, is a pleasure to work with, and wanted to thank her for re-upping. And then also related to climate is item 14, which is the, the town adopting of, the, just giving our blessing and participation to the climate act, to the Marin Electrification Roadmap, which is a roadmap to the electric vehicle roadmap that Marin has put together. A lot of good people worked for a long time on that. Now, you can read about it in the staff report. And it's an important document as we try to coordinate all of our work, eliminate a lot of the duplication of efforts, and work together to the really important goals that we need to reach with regard to climate.
Great. I just want to mention in the electrification roadmap, there was something about Marin Clean Energy, MCE, has a goal of providing 100% renewable and carbon-free electricity to its customers by 2045. Actually, I went to the MCE retreat, and we're already there. Now, remember, it's not all renewables, it's carbon-free. We're already at 100% many, many years beforehand. We'd like to be at all renewables, and that's a target later on. And the other thing I want to add is a shout out to Ann Manis and Maria Baird for all their work in the Recreation Department. Been a lot of accomplishments. So with that.
Can I also, if we're going to do shout outs right now, I have a shout out too. Because I want to give a shout out to our Public Works Director, Lauren Imbertis, for item 18. Super exciting. We've had a number of conversations about figuring out Park Road. We've had a number of conversations about figuring out Park Road. And it was... I was so glad to see the bids come in and see that we were right on the money. So it's going to be a really amazing project. Looking forward to that. And then also with regard to item 22, if anybody's available in the public or on the council, Avenue of the Flags, Marin County Civic Center, next Monday for Veterans Day, it's going to be a really lovely ceremony. Hope to see some of you there.
And I'm just going to note really quick that item number 23 should actually say a doctor proclamation recognizing Native American Heritage Month. So in case anyone is wondering about the American Heritage Month, it's Native American Heritage Month. Thank you.
Okay, so let's open it to public comment. And I'll be timing this on my phone since we are town clerkhouse taking a little break. Okay, Todd, take it away.
Hi, Todd Greenberg, Downtown Fairfax, objecting to how you run your meetings. There's 20 items on the consent calendar. That's six seconds to talk per item. I'm requesting that you pull item 5, 9, 13, 14, 16, 18, and 20. 18, I'm going to start with because it's the largest item you have on the consent calendar, an almost $2 million expenditure. Four bids, three of which that are only 3.8% away from each other. And you are awarding the contract to a contractor that has been in this business formation for... With this name for two months and in existence for two years. There needs to be a discussion, a public discussion about that. He may be the best person, but he's coming from Oakland. And there's reputable local companies that are here that have been around for a long time. Something goes wrong, does this guy have the resources? These are public dollars you're awarding. This should be discussed. Hellman and Cutrone did not submit for item number seven. How are we to know what you were doing? Number nine, receive quarterly recreation report. Well, there's a deficit of $27,000. Does anyone want to correlate that to the lack of rentals that are occurring up at the pavilion because we don't have rental incomes? Number 14, please rescind the ban on natural gas hookups. Why are we adopting something that is about that thick without any public discussion of it? Marin County's electrical, you know, whatever you're calling this, roadmap to electrical Please rescind the ban. It's against the court case decisions. We need natural gas in our homes. Anyone who cooks a lot would appreciate that. Biennial review of conflict of interest code. How come we're not getting to talk about that?
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hello, council. I also would like to complain that again, on your consent calendar, you actually have 18 items. Of those items, if you look at all the staff reports and citing number 14, I printed it out for you. There's approximately 200 pages. So in what, six or seven seconds, you're expecting everybody to make their comments on 200 pages, and you just slam this through. I do believe something like that should be challenged. That's just not right. And this is one of 18 items. So even your short-term rentals, that's 33 pages. I would challenge each of you up here that you have not read every one of these pages, even here in number 14, but you're pushing this through. Oh, yeah, I'm going to vote on it. You haven't read it. Barbara, to your item of number 12, you are also correct. For your purpose of insurance, if you do gross negligence, that's led or believed as an intentional act, you'll get what's called a reservation of rights. Thereafter, you'll have what's called a declaratory relief action filed, and that will preclude you from the indemnification otherwise provided in a standard insurance policy. So I would encourage you to continue to bring that up. But I would also ask the council, even if we're not here the next time, all of us, to look at this. Again, 18 items, this is just one at 200 pages, and oh, yeah, hey, it's good. You haven't read it. And Bruce, you even quoted this on a different issue that just caused rent control. We have to make sure...
Please stop misquoting me on that. You've said it over and over again.
I was here at the meeting.
And it is not what I said.
It is what you said.
No, it is not.
I was here at the meeting. Bruce, come on.
What I said was, I read it many times over. I flow charted it. I was not able to imagine all of the effects that it might have.
And you are interrupting my time. What you said was you said that had I actually read this, I probably wouldn't have voted on it. Whether you misspoke or not, that is what you said. Well, everybody else kind of agrees with that.
So, Michael, could we just move on?
Absolutely. Again, I'm really trying to emphasize, here is another 200 pages that I feel very comfortable that we have not all read.
Okay, I actually read it. Go ahead, next speaker, please. Thank you, Christine. Thank you, Bruce.
Frank Eger from the Cascades on item number 18. I don't remember this item coming from the town council for approval for preparation of plans and specs. And I read the staff report, it says, you know, this is the highest priority for a public works project. I don't remember you discussing that at all. In fact, the project said it's going to expand sidewalks. And so I wonder, will this make any changes to how parking is handled down there? Will parking on either side of Park Road be impacted by these changes? Will we still have the same amount of parking? In the past, we've talked about a proposal to try to divert some of this stormwater that comes off the hill into the park to get some irrigation into our redwood trees here. And I've read it, and I can't see anywhere where it's talking about how divert some of this stormwater into our redwood park that needs irrigation. So I don't know when all this was determined. You know, who... How did this happen? Was the Public Works Director in charge of handling the whole thing and not the council?
We discussed this in a Stormwater Projects Update a few months ago.
At the council meeting?
Yes.
Wow, that's $2 million. That's $2 million on Park Road.
We have to have the money allocated by December of this year for the ARPA dollars or we lose the ARPA dollars. That's why we discussed it at the last...
Well, with the number of projects that we need in this town to select this one is, I don't know, I think it's the wrong place to put that money. Thank you.
Thank you.
The ARPA dollars are limited in what you can use them for.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Mark Bell, Fairfax. We just had a council member move... Leave. How can you even vote on the consent calendar when a council member just leaves? We don't know if it actually has her consent or not. Another $1,000 for banners? Really? Another $1,000? I've talked to store owners, they don't want... They don't care about the banners. They're ugly, can't read them. There's been no study that they've even been effective. But this... What the store owners I've talked to want is to have the sidewalks power washed. They would do more for business than these illegible banners. As far as a Marin Electrification dream, AI is making all of this mute because it takes so much energy. To probably, coupled with electric cars, there's more electricity being generated by nuclear energy plants and more coal being burned. So where's the environmental savings? I heard a report that at the rate that it's going, the U.S. is going to need 120 nuclear energy plants in 10 years because it draws so much energy that wind and solar can't deal with it. If you want to do something as far as being environmentally sane, you need to get CPUC to remove the true-up charges that PGE is using on people putting in solar. I know people who grew up with solar, and they're actually paying more than their neighbors who don't have it.
Thank you. Any other speakers in the room? Any speakers on Zoom? Thank you, Michael, for turning that off.
There is one speaker on Zoom.
Okay. Oh, yes, okay.
Deb, you are unmuted.
Thank you, Deborah Benson, Cascades. Thank you, council, for hearing me. I want to speak to item 5, the financial reporting. At the end of the list of invoices and also checks, on 9/25, there was a check to US Bank in the amount of $20,129.53 with the... An account number that looks like a credit card number. No other notation except that it was a statement, a 9/16 statement. There's no accounting for if it was a credit card, which I am guessing it was, for what charges made up that $20,000 check. So in the interest of transparency and complete financial reporting, each of those charges, if it were to pay a credit card, should be itemized, just like a check would be itemized if someone went to the office supply store and paid with the check. There would be staples with a date and so much money. Each of these charges making up this $20,000 needs to be itemized in the financial reporting. And I brought this up before, but I don't see it being changed. So I would like to see that. And I agree with everything that Michael and Frank and Mark said previously. So thank you for hearing me.
Thank you, Deb. Any other speakers on Zoom?
There are no more speakers on Zoom.
Bringing it back to the council, just remember, there's a supplement on item 11. And if we're going to do a vote, let's do item 12 separate.
Okay, well, I'm happy to move the consent calendar sans item 12 with the supplements.
There's only one supplement for item 11. Okay, Christine, so on item 21, it has the wrong date, 2025. It says 2025 instead of 2024. Or town manager, haven't you been working with Bridget on this? Maybe they were starting in 2025 because it's coming up.
I believe that was a 2015 item.
Yep, that's correct. It should say 2015. It says 2025. It's just in the background information on the staff report.
So typically, if there's just a typographical error like that, we appreciate that being pointed out, and we correct that offline. You don't have to do a supplement or anything like that for that.
It's 2015 in the resolution, which the council is adopting.
Okay, thank you, Todd. All right, so with that, we have...
With the one supplement.
Okay, and would someone like to second that?
I'll second it.
And Madam Clerk, could you do a roll call vote, please?
Yes, Mayor, Councilmember Ackerman.
Yes.
Councilmember Cutrone.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blash.
Yes.
Mayor Kohler.
Yes. And now, if someone would like to make a motion on item 12?
Move it option of...
Do we need to read it? I actually don't have a printed copy.
Item... Well, item 12... Well, why don't we let somebody who's actually got in front of them make the motion? So item 12 is approved for those revisions to the Marin Wildfire Prevention Authority Joint Powers Agreement, JPA. So did someone want to make a motion? We don't have to wait for Councilmember Ackerman to read it.
I'll make a motion.
What is your motion, to approve it?
We approve the attached, amended, and restated MWPA Joint Exercise of Powers Agreement, JPA, and authorize the town manager to execute the agreement.
Okay, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Ackerman.
No.
Councilmember Cutrone.
I'm going to abstain.
Vice Mayor Blash.
No.
Mayor Kohler.
Okay, moving on. Thank you, all. Council reports and comments. Most folks, not all of us, had their reports in the... Already written. Future agenda items, I don't know that we have anything at this point. Town managers' report.
Thank you, Mayor. I will be very quick. I wanted to draw everyone's attention to, on our website, we also, as Councilmember Cutrone mentioned, highlighted the Marin County-wide Veterans Day event, which is happening on Monday. This is a hard copy. If anyone would like it, I will give it to them at the end of the meeting. And then I wanted to bring your attention to items that I am anticipating for the December 4th meeting. MSS rates. We hope to do the election certification and swearing in. The county has... That next meeting is December 4th, but the county actually has until December 5th. So we hope that they'll be able to complete their work early and so that we can then proceed. Otherwise, we would need a special meeting in December. Potential first reading or possibly second reading of anti-camping ordinance, first reading of short-term rental item, unless we have a special... We have it on a special meeting. We want to celebrate 10 years of the CAC, so the Climate Action Committee. And I just wanted to also mention, I'm very proud of the Fairfax Police Department, their assistance at our protests here in Fairfax. And also, they were key and got great compliments from the Town of Ross in assisting with their protest that happened over the weekend. So I just wanted to give a shout out to our excellent staff.
Great. Let's... Well, thank you very much. And just adjournment, and there's a spelling error in memory of Diane Cossey and Phil Lesh. And Diane Cossey was Fairfax resident for many years. She was part of our General Plan Advisory Committee, General Plan Implementation Committee. Councilmember Ackerman worked with her closely, many close friends. She passed away a couple of weeks ago and lived on mono. And I'm sure, Frank, you probably knew Diane. And then Phil Lesh. So thank you all. Good night, and we'll see you soon.